Good. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It's great when we have a full house. I know some of you are here for a ceremonial item up front, but don't worry, we'll have you out of here in about three hours, so... Oh, you didn't know we closed the doors after we get everybody in? Now, in all seriousness, when we're done with ceremonial item, I'll take a couple of minute recess and feel free to gather everyone up and go home. When we line up for the picture, everybody always asks, please, just stand up, get in the aisle, get all the pictures that you wanted, the kids with us. We do encourage that. If you have anybody at home, you might want to send them a text, because this is broadcast live out on Bright House Networks. It's on channel 199 if you want to have them DVR it. So, before we get up to that item, send a text out if you haven't done that already. This evening, we have a very, very, very special guest in the audience tonight. We have a young lady whose grandparents live here in Oviedo. They've been twenty...
Thirty.
Thirty-year residents of Oviedo. Their daughter, Amanda Riceauer, is a Petty Officer First Class on the USS Nimitz. She served the Navy for eighteen years, graduated from Oviedo High School in 1992, went through Lawton and Jackson, and we are honored this evening to have her daughter Cassidy here with us, and Cassidy is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So Cassidy, why don't you come on up? Linda, why don't you make sure the microphone's all set for her? Now, guys, this young lady is eight years old. Wait and see how amazing she is. You ready for this, Cassidy? Okay, you hang on just one second, okay?
Okay.
Get that printed up on you, and there's the flag. It's all yours, sweetheart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cassidy, great job. Give her a round of applause. Take a bow, Cassidy. Now Cassidy, you're heading out to... Come on up here by that microphone for a second. You can bring Grandma. Are you heading out to Hawaii? Is that what you were telling me?
Yes.
And what are you gonna do when you go out there?
Well, I'm just gonna have fun and do kinds of things and like, you know...
Are you meeting Mom?
Yes.
Are you gonna get to sail on the ship?
Yes.
Back to San Diego, right?
Yes.
That is awesome.
Wait, yeah.
And what is that called again? Tiger Week?
Tiger Cruise.
Tiger Cruise. Isn't that awesome, folks? The Navy, they decommission the ship, and their first port is in Hawaii, and then they let the family come on the ship with them and then sail with them to their next port. So that's where Amanda's heading off to, and she is just awesome. What a smile. Again, give her a round of applause. And when you see your mom, you tell her we send her all the best and thank you for what she does. She has two years left, right?
Yes, I'm very happy for it.
You're very happy it's only two more years?
Yeah.
Then she's gonna retire after twenty years, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Well, thank you, Cassidy. It was so nice meeting you tonight.
You're welcome.
You have a safe trip, okay?
All right, yeah.
All righty, go over there with Grandma now.
Thank you so much.
Oh, our pleasure. Thank you. Chief, would you come on up and lead us in the invocation, please?
And it looks like someday we'll have a veterans tribute to see some of these names on, too.
That's right.
Things are progressing nicely.
Did you write that name down? I'm sure you did.
Yes. If you'd like to join me in a word of prayer. Father God, we thank you for the blessings that you've bestowed on this community. We pray for your guidance and direction as these important decisions come before our elected leaders. We ask blessings on them and their family and good health. Lord, we pray for our sports teams, Babe Ruth team. We thank you for the protection you afforded them this season and brought them home safely to us. Lord, we pray as we start the new school year that your guiding protection in your hand would safeguard all of our children as they wander in and out of our school properties as we commence with the new school year. Lord, we pray for our military who are actively serving to protect us. Guide them, direct them, keep them healthy, keep their families safe. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chief. All righty, our first order of business is the recognition of the Babe Ruth Boys Baseball State Champions. So Counsel, why don't we just join me down on the front? Thank you, Drew. Well, tonight, and a lot of you are here for this, we are here to recognize the Babe Ruth Boys Baseball Twelve and Under B All-Star Team who took the state championship. To introduce these fine young men, I am going to first introduce their coach, Coach Steve Ruff. Steve, come on in. Now, Coach, I'm gonna give you the microphone. Why don't you introduce everybody you have with us? We can take that hardware. You can place it right up here if you'd like.
First, the coaches. As far as Andy, Pobelski. Justin Pobelski, pitcher, first base. Brody Ruff, pitcher and shortstop. Brad Crown. First base, second base, and outfield. Gabe Soster, second base and outfield. Michael Carpino, pitcher, outfield, and third base. James Ralph, left field and second base. Matt Pocken, pitcher on third base.
I rolled my ankle at Boeing.
At Boeing?
Justin Cunegliero, catcher.
Definitely wasn't easy getting over to as far as state. We had a few problems with injuries. We did a warm-up tournament that was more of a warm-up for the other teams than us. Didn't do too good in it, but we again battled and went up to state and definitely, I think we won by margin of victory by seventy-one, twenty, I think it was, in the... So it was pretty, pretty good victories up there, but the team played great, and Rick's got a little bit more on the story there.
Well, let me tell you something. We overcame a lot of adversity, we really did, and these boys stepped up when we needed them to step up, step up the most. You know, like Coach Steve said, we had a lot of injuries and a lot of things just not going our way, but, you know, there were eleven guys in that dugout who believed that they could do it, came a long way to pass through Miami, to pass through teams in Orlando, to pass, to get past teams out in Tampa, and these guys, you know, fought, fought their butts off, and we just kept riding the waves and kept believing in them, and before you know it, they came up with a victory, and kudos to them, because, you know, they played hard and they never lost faith, and they believed, and now they're state champs, so it ended great.
Also, I wanna give thanks, too, to a couple other coaches that aren't up here, though, but Ken Crown, wherever there. And I don't know if Mike Carpino's in here either. Right there, all right. We work with our pitchers there.
Yeah. Yeah, I was really proud of the boys, because in three of the five games we played, we came back from behind, and we came back like six runs, and then we ended up winning by a seven, eight-run margin. Boys really came together. They did a great job, and I'm really proud of them.
Well, guys, we can all, we can't begin to tell you how proud we are of you. I mean, it is just awesome when we go out and we go about and we hear all about all the success that Oviedo sports teams have, that you are now part of. So congratulations to you. Congratulations to the parents, also. You've raised great kids. Now, guys, why don't you come on up, line up up in front of us here? I'm sure you have like a standard team lineup, and Councilwoman Drago and I will just be in the back. You'll never see us. Coach, why don't you come on in here, get your trophy? Councilman Brayton will give it to you. Yeah, we'll take a knee, we'll line us up. Drew will get ya. This is a first, that Councilwoman Drago and I can be seen in one of these shots. You can, you can tag all of us on Facebook. We'd appreciate it. Congratulations, guys. #OviedoIsGreat. You can, you can tag all of us on Facebook. We'd appreciate it. Congratulations, guys. We'll call the meeting back to order, and we are up to item number two, which is the, is the approval of the minutes from our meeting of July fifteenth, regular session, and a special session of July twenty-second. Like to entertain a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, call the vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Motion carries. Moving on, we're up to the public comment portion of our meeting. It's item number three. This is for anybody in the audience, I do, I do not have any written requests this evening, who would like to address the council on any item that is not on the agenda this evening. Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Shank.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Shank, anything?
I'm good.
Councilwoman?
I'm good.
Councilman Brayton?
Good.
Deputy Mayor, you're good, too? All righty. All those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, which is item number four through ten, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose. Motion carries. Some items that were in there for those who may not have an agenda in front of them is the traffic signal for Oviedo on the park at Mitchell Hammock is in there, the agreement with Seminole County School Board for school resource officers, and the DARA program, which the city of Oviedo always supports. Chief Chudnow, you do a great job with that, as did your predecessors, in always keeping that as part of the budget. So, great job. And that is the... Well, if you're really interested, there's some GeoGrid materials for dirt moving, but, you know, that's just the normal stuff. All righty, we'll move along. We're up to item number eleven, our first public hearing tonight. It's ordinance number fifteen sixty-eight, Comprehensive Plan Amendment for Covenant Presbyterian Church of Oviedo. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council has asked to amend the city's future land use, Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for, to change the future land use designation of approximately nine point seven-three acres from commercial to low-density residential. The property is part of, this nine point seven-three acres is part of an overall sixteen-acre site. It's the eastern nine acres of the site. The property has a, two future land use designations of rural on the west, commercial on the east, and the, the request is to take the eastern part that is designated commercial and to change it to low-density residential. The staff reviewed the request per the requirements of the Comprehensive Plan and found it to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan. The Development Review Committee reviewed the request at its Thursday, May sixteenth, two thousand thirteen meeting, and thereat recommended approval of the requested Future Land Use Amendment. And then on Tuesday, June eleventh, two thousand thirteen, the Planning Zoning Appeals Board conducted a public hearing and also recommended approval of the proposed Future Land Use Map Amendment. The low-density residential Future Land Use Designation is compatible and consistent with the surrounding Future Land Use Designations in the area. It is recommended that city council read the ordinance by title, conduct a public hearing, and adopt ordinance number fifteen sixty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. At this time, Mr. Group, could you read ordinance number fifteen sixty-eight by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Oviedo, Florida, amending ordinance number eight ninety-six of the city of Oviedo, Florida, said ordinance being the Comprehensive Land Planning Ordinance within the city of Oviedo, Florida, as previously amended, providing for amendment of the Future Land Use Map with the Future Land Use Element of the city of Oviedo Comprehensive Plan, said amendment changing the Future Land Use of approximately nine point seven-three acres from commercial CM to low-density residential LDR, said property being assigned tax parcel identification number twenty-four dash twenty-one dash thirty-one dash three hundred dash zero zero one zero dash zero 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 zero, and being described in this ordinance, providing for legislative findings and intent, providing for assignment of the land use designation for the property, providing for severability, providing for ratification of prior acts of the city, providing for conflicts, providing for codification and directions to the Code Codifier, and providing for an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Group. No, that wasn't that bad. It would've been worse. At this time, I will turn it over to the applicant, if they are here, if they have a presentation. Can you give a copy over to the clerk, so she can run up to the public? You're only gonna deal with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment first, correct? We'll do the...
Yes, yes.
You actually have three separate items.
Right.
Just hang on one moment while the clerk gets the overhead ready. Thank you, Linda.
Just to get everybody situated, and I know this is just dealing with the comp plan portion, but just to get everyone situated, in red up there, if you have the smaller ones there, this area is actually an existing PBD that was both a church use and a commercial shopping center that you all previously through, and district office is dealing with just a portion, which is just a portion that is currently zoned commercial, sorry, it's not PBD, it's zoned commercial, that we're, that we're gonna change to, requesting change to residential. And so just so you all knew, wherever we're in the rural, or this is a sanctuary subdivision of the Y vote down here, and we're, our request is, well, I guess we'll get into the specifics of the zoning request in a minute, but for now...
One at a time?
Yeah. For now, if you have any questions on the supplemental interviews, I'll try to answer them.
So, so to clarify, you wanna change the land use from what to what?
From commercial to LDR.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Madden? Mr. Madden, do you have anything else to present to us?
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the, the little portion you have outlined in red or pink, whatever that is, it looks as if you've already drew the development in there, and then there's just empty land next door.
That is correct. This whole piece is actually, it's not prepared for the next couple as well, but this piece is actually all made today.
Is that the full sixteen?
This is the proposed project that we'll get into.
Is that the full sixteen acres, including that empty piece, that vacant piece?
Correct. There's, the request is, even though the red goes all the way around, because they have a shared driveway here, the request is actually for this portion of the sixteen acres.
Okay.
Because the church actually, the church portion actually has a different location.
Okay, gotcha.
Anything else from anybody? Thank you, Ms. Madden. Can you just slide that board over so it's not in everyone's way for the time being? Thank you, sir. All righty, it's all situated. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. I do not have any written requests to speak on this item. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address council at this time on ordinance number fifteen sixty-eight? What we're dealing with right now, folks, is just the land use change. They wanna downzone the property from commercial to low-density residential. We're not dealing with the site plan yet. Anybody?
I just have a question.
Minute. All right, gotta come up. So you just need to state your name, full name, and address for the record, and then you can ask the question.
Delvedita, Haggas was twenty-six, twenty-five, internal code, going back to the...
As I said earlier, this three items. Yes, sir. Just name and address for the record.
Larry Berman, 3675 Arrow Road, place of sanctuary.
Yes, sir.
My question is, what is the definition of low-density? That's been talked about, and I know we don't have a clear understanding of low-density. I understand what the church is, and the last second question is, does the church have a previously attuned, because it's a larger description versus the one that's going to be in town, because of persons?
Well, I don't, I don't think they're, they're not addressing the church property at all. So the church property, what was, the way it was zoned and the way it was approved, Mr. Cobb, that was about six years ago, I would guess?
Yes, sir.
About five or six years ago, hasn't changed. All they're looking at doing, Mr. Berman, is changing what would have been a large commercial plaza, from that commercial plaza to residential homes. Mr. Cobb can explain the process with, from what they have to low-density residential and what the rest of it will be. Mr. Cobb, can you give a brief explanation for everybody?
Yes, sir, I'll be happy to.
Thank you, sir.
Just actually looking up to see how big the church was, too.
Thank you.
Tonight, in the state of Florida, basically, we have a hierarchy of land use. At the top of the hierarchy is our Comprehensive Plan, and the Comprehensive Plan says that a piece of property, which right now is commercial, you can have certain uses that are allowed that are determined, identified as commercial, and what the Comprehensive Plan is, says is that that commercial can occupy a certain portion of that property. In the commercial Future Land Use, we say that it's called floor-area ratio, and it can occupy up to one-half of the property. Now, obviously, the buildings can't do that because we require a lot of other things to go into the property in addition to the building, such as parking and landscaping and stormwater management areas. We also have buffers, and this property in particular, we have wetlands that we have to deal with. So what they may be allowed to do, a point, 0.5, really turns into around 0.25, and so they may be able, maybe occupy a quarter of the property when it comes to reality. What they're asking for tonight is, in that Comprehensive Plan level, to go to low-density residential. And what that easily means is that you can have homes, most of the time with low-density residential, single-family homes, and you can have that from a minimum of one dwelling unit per acre to a maximum, and this is where it gets really fun, because no one really, no one's ever seen anyone build half a house, but three and a half dwelling units per acre. And the way we utilize this is that we'll take the acres, and in our Comprehensive Plan, we base it on net. So we take out any water bodies, and we take out any wetlands, and we get down to that net acres, and then we multiply it by that 3.5, and that tells us the maximum number of homes that could be located on the property. Now, we don't tell the developer how he has to do it, we let him and his designers figure out how to put that maximum number of homes. But a lot of times, they can't meet that maximum number because they have to put roads in, they have to put a park in, they have to put buffers in, they have to put stormwater ponds in, so it keep, they have to put utilities in. And so it keeps them from reaching that maximum number. Sometimes they can make it, sometimes they don't. But the main thing about the low-density residential is that it's that ratio from one, a minimum of one, to a maximum of 3.5. And when we, the way we have to do it in the state of Florida is that we use that to determine how much, how many trips each household will create, how many gallons of water they'll use, how many gallons of sewer they'll use, how much trash will it generate. And we have to add all that up, and we have to compare it to what would be the impacts of the commercial land use that it's already approved for. In this case, going from commercial to low-density residential, it actually decreases the impacts to the city's roads, to the water lines, the sewer lines, it decreases the amount of drainage that they'll need, and, but it increases the amount of parkland they'll need, because commercial would not require any. So that, we have to go through that analysis. The second level, which is what the City Council will review next, is their zoning, and that's when you get into, start talking about lot sizes, and you'll start talking about setback requirements and things like that, that's their zoning. The thing about it is, is that they still can't put any more homes than what the Future Land Use will allow them to have. So the zoning basically sets up how they'll put the lots in the property. They still can't, they can't exceed the number that the land use allows. The last part of the pile, which Mayor mentioned, we have three items tonight, is the actual master land use plan in this case, because this property has two types of development on it. It has single, proposed, single-family residential on the east side, and a church on the west side. The, written, what is approved for the property right now is a church and a commercial center. That's what's approved currently. So this developer is proposing to change that, to go to a single-family residential on the east side, as well as a church on the west side. So it's a hierarchy, all the way, each, each individual one, the Comprehensive Plan is the controlling, and the zoning gives you a little bit more detail, and then when you get into the plan, that's where you actually get to the detail, and you start to see how everything will be laid out. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. And then, after this evening, assuming which direction it goes, then the next step is plating, which is where the lots are actually assigned, and so on and so forth. So there's still many more steps in, in the process of changing land use. Is there anybody else now who would like to address City Council after the explanation from our city manager, Mr. Cobb? Seeing done, I'm going to close the public hearing and move on to the pleasure of council. Mr. Mayor? Councilman Schenk, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1568.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Schenk, you have the floor.
I'm good.
Deputy Mayor?
I just had one, one comment, you know, because I, I think I have some of my neighbors, neighbors out there from Sanctuary, I live across the street in Riverside, and so I had some interest in this as well, and I know when we approved the commercial back five, six years ago, it kind of concerned me a little bit, so I'm actually, feel a little better that it's just going to be homes. I think that'll be less, you know, less impact to us out there on 419. Councilman Schenk also lives in Live Oak, so he has anything, so we both kind of understand as the rest of the council does. So this is probably, you know, in my view, a better, a better scenario. So we'll see how we go. We've got two more steps to go, we could talk about it, but for this, I think this might be a little better than having more retail and noise and things like that.
Great, thank you. Councilman Britton, do you have anything to add?
No.
Not at this time? Councilwoman? All righty. So we have a motion on table to approve the land use change. All those in favor of adopting ordinance number 1568, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 12, this is ordinance number 1569, this is where it'll get a little bit more technical. This is the zoning map amendment for Covenant Presbyterian Church of Oviedo. Mr. Cobb, turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. This involves the same property, the same 9.73 acres that's located on the north side of County Route 419. This request is a change of zoning, to amend the zoning map from commercial C1 to residential R1BB. The subject property, as we mentioned before, the subject property has two Future Land Use Designations. Well, it also has two zoning districts. The west side of the property is zoned ag agriculture, and the east side of the property is zoned C1, commercial, the proposed, with the proposed to R1B, single-family residential. The, the maximum utilization that will be allowed on the property with the low-density residential Future Land Use and the R1BB zoning district will be 32 dwelling units, single-family residential dwelling units. The site is currently vacant. Access will be from County Road 419. The proposed R1BB zoning district has a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet, which is consistent with the variety of lot sizes within the Sanctuary Plan Unit Development that borders the property to the north and to the east. It also is consistent with the low-density residential Future Land Use Designation. The Development Review Committee reviewed this zoning map amendment request at its Thursday, May 16, 2013 meeting, and thereat recommended approval of the proposed zoning map amendment. The Planning Zoning Appeals Board conducted a public hearing on June 11, 2013, and also recommended approval of the proposed zoning map amendment. It is recommended that City Council read the ordinance by title only, conduct a public hearing, and adopt ordinance number 1569.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Group, at this time, will you read ordinance number 1569 by title only, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Ordinance of the City of Oviedo, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the City of Oviedo, Florida, said amendment changing the zoning district of approximately 9.73 acres located on the north side of County Road 419 and approximately 990 feet east of Willingham Road from City of Oviedo Commercial C1 to the City of Oviedo Residential R-1BB, providing for legislative fines and intent, implementing actions, incorporation, description, and map, conflict severability, non-codification, and an effective date. That's the ordinance by title, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Group. Mr. Madden?
You're going to work off of the same map for now?
Yes, sir, just the same map, which basically kind of shows the whole area and the, and the trends of the area, and, and basically you'll notice that all of the other development that is, including over here, everything that's up on 419 is consistent with our request, which is the minimum of 50-foot lots, and that's how they were built, so, I mean, if you kind of look at just the trend of how everything was developed, ours are larger lots in the back and Sanctuary, and you went back, but everything that's up on 419, we're consistent with these all 50-foot lots here, right next to us, in the back, these are a little bit larger back here, but you can get into that, they're proposing to build a fence or wall against, against those individuals, which is more on to the next step, but I think we're consistent with the area and, you know, feel that the request is reasonable for that reason.
Great.
Any questions you all have, I'll be glad to answer.
Anybody have any questions from Mr. Madden? Up and down the desk? Councilwoman, anything?
No.
Yeah, those things never work out well. While Mr. Madden's putting everything back together over there, I will open up the public comment portion. This is a public hearing, as we said earlier. I do not have any written request. Is there anybody who would like to address council on the zoning? Now, this is the, the next step, as Mr. Cobb had said, what we would apply here are the lot sizes, and as you heard from the city manager and from the applicant, these lot sizes are all compatible with everything that's up and down, 419 and Riverside, Sanctuary, and even a few of them up in the front of Live Oak. So is there anybody who'd like to address council at this time? No? All righty, we're going to close the public comment portion, and we're going to move on to the pleasure of council. Mr. Mayor? Councilman Schenk?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1569.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Schenk, you have the floor.
Just to go through it again, Mr. Cobb, I hate to just ask that same question that the mayor just said, but to make sure that it's clear that...
Put it on the record.
Yeah, no, I just want to, you know, he had said it, the applicant, and I just want to make sure that what he said is correct. That basically, I know in Live Oak, the front portion planners has 50-foot lots, but also in Twin Rivers and the front of Sanctuary are all similar-sized lot sizes.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
No, I'm good for this one, thanks.
Councilman Britton?
I just got a quick question, maybe, Mr. Cobb, you can, you can help me with this. It says, "As a result of the change in zoning, will have a decrease in impact on level of service for solid waste, but an increase in impact on recreation level of service of .21 acres." And I think I saw something in here about a discrepancy with the Comprehensive Plan on loss of economic use for commercial activity. What did, what did the DRC do to reconcile that?
I, basically, Deputy Mayor, the, I mean, Mr. Britton, the, as far as the recreation impact is concerned, when you have a commercial zoning district, or even a commercial Future Land Use Designation, the recreational impact is zero. Residential obviously does have a recreational impact, there is a demand that will be created through the creation of the homes and the population that will live there. The, when we get into, basically, what our Comprehensive Plan and our Land Development Code requires, they require the developer to provide recreational space on their property. So they will be meeting that within the subdivision as far as addressing that impact, and they'll address that as part of the development of the property. They'll be required to, as far as our Land Development Code is, they're required to provide, I believe it's 350 square feet per dwelling unit. As far as the reduction...
So it'll come, it'll come forward with the development agreement to address that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It'll be addressed as part of the development of the property. As far as the reduction in the amount of commercial land, obviously, we are, we're going from commercial land to residential land, so that's going to come off, that was land that was available for commercial development. One of the things that I found, that what the analysis found with the zoning and with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, was that even though we have a reduction in the amount of commercial land, we still have enough land available to meet the needs of our population. So we haven't gone below our threshold of saying, we don't have enough commercial land anymore. We still have a sufficient amount of commercial land available to allow for development of commercial uses within the city that will meet the needs of the population.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman?
I'm good.
You're good.
And I think, I remember reading somewhere, and I just did the math, it was like less than 1%, it was like 1%, it's a 1% change in the amount of economic...
Yes, sir.
...availability. It was a previous thing, I think, I read somewhere.
Mr. Madden, I have a question for you. Can you come up?
Yes, sir.
How many square foot are your lots? I realize that's the next item, but since we're talking zoning...
Yeah, our minimum lot is 50 by 115 feet deep, even though the zoning allows for 5,000.
So that's 50, 750?
Somewhere thereabouts.
Okay. So you're going to do about 6,000 square foot lots? Are all the lots the same, or are there going to be some...
There's some that are larger, and all the, the, the minimum one, some of them are actually a good bit larger than that, but the smallest one that we have proposed is 50 by 115.
Right, okay. So the smallest one is 5,750 square foot. What are the setbacks?
I believe there are five on the side, is it 20 and 20? Yes, 20 front and 20 rear.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cobb? Is that consistent setbacks with what surrounds it?
With what surrounds it? Yes, sir.
So it's the same setback as, I'll be more specific, same setback as Sanctuary up front, the same setback as Riverside across the street?
One correction, it's 25 to the garage phase.
Okay.
So it's a little larger for that.
That may be where the difference is, Mayor. This, these setbacks are set up based on our current Land Development Code, whereas Sanctuary, Riverside, Live Oak, they're all based on an older Land Development Code, which I believe the front setback was 25 feet in the front and 20 in the back. Yes, on the 50-foot wide lots in all of the subdivisions, we have a 5-foot side setback. The, the way our existing Land Development Code is structured is that we wanted to promote the building, we want to promote the house rather than the garage. So we will allow a developer a 20-foot front setback if he's willing to put the garage five feet back, so this, as Mr. Madden mentioned, it's five feet to the, it's 25 feet to the garage, but it's 20 feet to the front of the house, so that you could set the garage back and make the front porch the predominant feature of the house. If they put the garage and the house aligned with each other, then the setback is 25 feet, just like you would have in Sanctuary, Riverside, or Live Oak. If the garage is in the front and the house is in the back, then the house is 25 feet. So, yes, sir, it is consistent.
New code gives them a little more flexibility.
Yes, sir.
Okay. As long as it's consistent. Mayor?
Just, just one quick thing, I was just looking ahead, because, you know, sometimes we get a little technical up here, and I kind of put myself in, in your shoes. A gentleman asked a question, what is low density? And reading our staff report, if you hang around for the one coming up, this property, Mr. Madden, correct me if I'm wrong, somewhere between 31 and 35 homes, correct?
31.
30...
Mr. Madden, I'm sorry. They just need that in the microphone, please. Your response, or else the clerk won't pick it up.
That's, that's correct, but we're proposing 31.
Okay, 31.
We're under the maximum.
And sometimes you hear all the codes and everything, and that was a good question by a gentleman, 30, 31.
Bottom line is that three and a half units per acre.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Anybody on council?
Good.
Alrighty. Hearing, no further questions. The motion on the table is to adopt ordinance number 1569, changing the zoning to R1 VB. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty. Moving along, yeah, I'm going to. If council will indulge me, since we have a roomful of folks for this, I am going to skip over to item number 15, which is the final resolution for this item, and that is resolution number 2660-13. Mr. Cobb, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. The city council's, this is a request for city council to adopt resolution number 2660-13, approving the amended and restated non-statutory development agreement and associated amended master land use plan for the enclave at Sanctuary and Covenant Presbyterian Church development. Subject property consists of approximately 16.14 acres. It's located on the north side of County Road 419, east of Willingham Road, directly adjacent to the Sanctuary Plan Unit development. In May of 2009, the city council adopted resolution number 1983-09, approving the non-statutory development agreement for the master land use plan for the Covenant Presbyterian Church mixed-use site. This was where we were talking earlier about how the western part of the property is proposed for a church, and then the eastern part of the property was for a commercial center. On February 20th, 2012, city council adopted resolution number 2472, approving a two-year extension of the non-statutory development agreement and the master land use plan. The amended and restated non-statutory development agreement includes development standards for the proposed development represented in the amended master land use plan. The staff has found that the amended and restated non-statutory development agreement and the master land use plan are in compliance with the city's comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code requirements. The, provided that the future land use map and zoning map amendments were approved, which they were, to allow the low-density residential on the east side of the property. The city attorney has reviewed the amended and restated non-statutory development agreement, has provided comments, and they were addressed by the applicant. The primary changes to this mass, this development agreement and this master land use plan deal with the east side of the property, the 9.17 acres. And the, it is to make the change, basically, from the commercial center to the 31 dwelling units. Now, the one thing about the land use, the master land use plan is that it does provide for your preliminary subdivision plan of the east side of the property. The church side of the property remains unchanged. One of the things, Mayor, we had the question earlier about, you know, how about, how big's the church? When the church was originally approved, I was looking it up while we were having the discussion, and when the church was originally approved, the church itself, the church building, was approved at 11,368 square feet, and, which was around 600 seats. So, I would say it was more of a medium-sized church, maybe. There's also a fellowship hall of about 4,600 square feet. And then there was also, there was plans for a dwelling unit, and that was mostly for the pastor to live in. So, that was the west side of the property. It maintained its rural land use designation, its agricultural land use. There was a special exception use order that was approved to allow the church use on the property, and then the master land use plan followed that. This change deals with the east side of the property primarily, and the layout of the single-family residential land uses. One of the questions earlier, probably a good time to address this, one of the questions earlier dealt with buffering and, between this property and the Sanctuary. And in your development plans, I was looking through the development plans, along the east side, there is a wetland system, and the wetland's going to provide a natural buffer. And one of the things about the property is that there'll have to be a buffer outside of the wetland. That'll be a requirement that they have. And so, the wetland system will provide along the east side of the property, and along the north side, the northeast corner of the property, the wetland system will provide a buffer area there, a natural buffer area. Also, as well, along the northeastern corner of the property, on the plans, on the master plan, you'll see that that's where the stormwater system is. So, there's a little bit more of a separation there between that wetland system, the buffer, and the, the stormwater master plant, the stormwater system. You also have, along the north side, are some of what I believe to be the larger lots within the community. There isn't a designated buffer per se there, but when you have residential, single-family residential, yes, single-family residential, you don't necessarily have to have a buffer. But the one thing about it is, is that there's still a natural buffer on the Sanctuary side that was required as part of that PUD. And so, that's going to be actually between the two, the two sets of homes. When you get over onto the church property, there is a designated A-type buffer there on the north side. At landward, southward of that buffer is the church's stormwater pond. And so, you've got a little bit more separation there. Then you have the church parking lot. Then in the middle of the property, you have the church itself. And so, that, that setback away as well. On the west side of the property, you have a, trying to remember, it's a, an 1,100-foot setback from the Econlakatchee River. And so, the eastern, I believe it's, I think it's around the eastern 500 feet of the property, has to be left natural because of the city's 1,100-foot zone from the Econlakatchee River. So, there are, there will be separation between the homes in the Sanctuary as well, in these homes here, as well as the church use too. The church is more oriented toward 419, and so, you're going to have, there'll be a separation from that as well. The development agreement addresses lot sizes. It addresses, also addresses the setback requirements. It addresses the stormwater. It addresses the streets, and everything that deals with the subdivision of the property. The staff has reviewed it and found it to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and the city's Land Development Code. Staff is recommending approval. The city attorney has reviewed the non-statutory development agreement. His comments have been incorporated into the agreement. The development review committee considered the development agreement, master land use plan, at two meetings, it's May 9th and May 16th meetings. The development review committee made a few changes. Those have already been incorporated into the agreement as well. They recommended approval. The Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board conducted a meeting, reviewed the prop, reviewed the non-statutory development agreement. And there, they made, they recommended changes as well. Those changes are provided in sections 5, I, 5 through 9 on page 16 of the non-statutory development agreement. And the non, of course, the agreement is provided as exhibit 1, resolution number 2660-13. It's recommended that city council adopt resolution number 2660-13.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Madden, back up. Lynda, you can actually probably go into the package also. We were just realizing, if you go into attachment 3.
This is just a blow-up of what we were looking at earlier, just a closer picture so we can discuss a few of the, a few of the items.
Just give the clerk a second, Mr. Madden. Attachment 3, Lynda, about the third sheet in, we'll have a site plan. Yeah, that looks like it. Thank you, Lynda. If you can get the light on it and zoom in on it, that'll be great. Might even have a better light. There we go, even brighter. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Mr. Madden, the floor is yours. Name and address for the record, please.
Charlie Madden, 431 Ratio Avenue, Maitland 32751. A few of the, a few of the items that, that I've heard mentioned that I'll go ahead and cover would be, I know that up, up here, we're adjacent to Sanctuary, even though the code, the code doesn't require a buffer residential to residential. And the Sanctuary does have, implemented into their approval, they already, they have an existing 25-foot buffer along, along those lines. And I don't know if that was in anticipation of the commercial or something that was going there, but that is already implemented and in place, an existing buffer on Sanctuary side of the line. In addition to that, at the, at the meeting at, at P&amp;Z, we did agree that where these lots are adjacent to the northern property line, that we would build a wall or fence along that line where the lots are. You know, it does, it prohibits us from getting into this wetland area that's in this area, but, and we're not going to , obviously, we can't build a wall into the wetland or the buffer. But where the homes are, where we have homes against homes, and, you know, and the nice thing is, is that there's, I've been out there several times, and there's actually a real thick of trees here. And so, you really have two or three homes that are actually against about, you know, maybe two homes in the Sanctuary, but there will be a fence or wall that will be constructed.
So, Mr. Madden, let me just clarify for the folks in the audience. What you're saying is the homes in the Sanctuary that are abutting this property, the rear of those, there is a 25-foot conservation easement.
Existing.
Existing.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cobb, do you concur with that?
Yes, sir. On the Sanctuary side, yes, sir.
Right. It's, so that's on the Sanctuary side. Can't be touched by you.
No, sir.
Okay. Now, are you putting any type of buffer on your side?
No, sir. We're not proposing a buffer on our side. I mean, even today, honestly, you can't see through that 25-foot. It's so thick. But we are, you know, agreeing, there wasn't a buffer required by code for us on our side, but we're, we are agreeable to doing a wall or fence, and that's in, in the agreement that you have. What wasn't covered in the agreement that you have-
Right, because residential to residential doesn't really require a buffer.
Yes, sir. Correct.
A fence. But you're going to do a fence.
We're going to do a fence anyway.
The whole length?
Voluntarily. Yes, sir.
The whole length?
The length where the lots are. We can't go into the wetland, and this is the church property, so we'd be going from there to there, where our lots are proposed.
Why wouldn't you just go the whole length?
Well, we can't, the whole length would get us into this wetland.
Well, no, I understand the wetland. I'm heading west.
Heading west, our property line is there. We don't own anything beyond that. That's the church property. And the church, if you look in that agreement, the church has buffers and fences and- Things that they're required to do as well. So, the church would actually continue that theme. They would be required in that, in agreement. Whenever they constructed.
What other type of walls are you building?
Um, you know, I, we, we, we haven't done it yet, but mainly what you see these days are not too many board-onboards anymore. You're mainly looking at PVC. You know, there's brick, there's obviously block, and, you know, we'll just have to get to, get to those kind of details during the next step.
Okay. So, what are you proposing?
Well, the way it's written in there, it says fence or wall. I imagine, because there already is, as I said, a very thick 25-foot buffer that's back there now on the Sanctuary side, I would imagine that it'll, it'll be a 6-foot PVC fence.
That's, that's, that was unique. I remember that coming up during the commercial hearing that that, that buffer was there. How about walls out front?
Out front, and in the agreement, it presently isn't, isn't covered because out front, we actually have open space. And one of the unique things in this subdivision that is unlike any other, Live Oak or over here at Sanctuary or any of them, all of them have several lots, many lots, that, that back up to 419. In our, we have, well, basically, just two side yards here. This is a good, a good way to end. And then this is, you know, this is open space. But basically, we have two side yards here. And so, what we, what I think that we'd like to do is agree to do a, a wall or some other kind of treatment that would be acceptable to council, you know, during the next step of this process, whether it be, I actually really like the way that Live Oak looks with the white picket fence, and I think that's very attractive with landscaping. And for what we're doing here with just the two sides, I, I think it would look good on this project to do something like that. It's an aesthetics thing. It's a taste thing. You know, MI Homes is going to be the home builder. And, you know, I understand that many of the other subdivisions have a, have a brick wall like, like the Sanctuary does and so forth. But we'd certainly like the option to propose something that might be what we would deem to be a little more aesthetically pleasing.
And you would have to bring that back to us for approval before we would approve your plat?
Um, if that's, yeah, if that's what we need to do. But we'd like to have that option to come up with a creative design and bring it back, because I, I think, I think they really like the way Live Oak looks.
What about the eastern side? I seem to remember the commercial had a wall there or something.
Well, over here, again, it's existing 25-foot buffer. And, you know, this is really side yards to side yards. We don't even have backyards. And so, you know, these are 50-foot lots. We're 50-foot lots, and we're actually still over 25, you know, 25 feet away. I didn't think it was necessary there on the east side.
The commercial had a wall, didn't it?
Well, the, the commercial probably did. Sure, they did because of the use. That's obviously a, a code would have required that. It's a much more intense use than the like-kind use that we're doing, since we're matching what they are.
Okay. Council, have any questions from Mr. Madden? Is your presentation done? Or do you have something?
Yes, sir.
Ready? Deputy Mayor?
Mr. Madden, I, I know that we're, we might be getting ahead of ourselves, but I just want to be on the record, you know, just from, from, from living out there and passing this every day. Me personally, I'd like to see what you're, I always like to see what people have in mind, you know, these, these treatments. And I realize that's a different step. But at this early stage, before you get in, you know, even though there's that 20-foot, 25-foot buffer, that buffers up there, it's sometimes the peace of mind for homeowners, and it's, it's not that many houses, that to me, a brick wall would be better, or some type of masonry wall, block, stuccoed, something like that. But on the front, for me, I think it should look pretty much the same as a continuation of the Sanctuary. I don't think that we should have something totally different, because, you know, that area of Oviedo is very, very unique out there. And, you know, fence, fences blow down. They, they don't stand up well. I realize this is an expense. I'm, I'm personally, I mean, there's four of us up here, but I would just, I'd like to see what you're proposing, to take a look at it, because I'm not sure what you have in mind. I kind of know what you're talking about, Live Oak. But I know how Sanctuary is, that, that brick running all along 419. This is right next door. To me, it would look better if it would continue. And I'm talking brick in the back and especially in the front. I don't think the front could have something that looked different than Sanctuary. I mean, that's just my thought. But I, I do want to keep my mind open and see what you're going to bring back. I know we have another step. But just looking at that, that area, it would be nice if it would be the same wall as Sanctuary has out front.
I understand what, I understand what you're saying, and I, and I've driven this many, many times. It's, I know you have-
Right.
The Sanctuary wall actually ends here.
Right.
And then you have, of course, the fire station.
Right.
And then you have a fairly long stretch where this retention pond is.
Right.
And, you know, so, to me, I, because I understand what you're saying for consistency, and I drove that, and I looked at the transition from the brick walls to the white picket fence and some brick columns like Live Oak has, and I, and I thought it was very attractive. And so, I, you know, again, I'd like to-
I think they-
I don't want to kick the can down the road, so to speak, but, but I would like to have the opportunity to propose something. And, and, you know, we're obviously not at that step yet.
No, I was just, I was just giving you my point. I'd like to see what you have in mind as well. My other question is, that property is going to have that road cut at 419. You know how the, the grass there, it's got like a dip, and then it goes up the hill? Is that going to be kind of flattened out, or is that going to be, is the, is the road going to be, you're going to have to go up on it? Are you going to level that out, put walls next? I mean, how is that cut actually going to look with that, the way that, that property is?
Well, I mean, that's a good question. We'll have to get into the grading issues of that and make- We'll have to get into the grading issues of that and make sure that we, you know, abide by, DOT is going to have some say-so in that, and we'll, we'll need to make sure that-
You've got, you've got a very high angle up there to-
We do, but I think we'll be, I think we have room to, you know, to put in a reasonable slope that is going to aesthetically look fine and, of course, function around.
And, and you mentioned, you know, with, with the Transportation Department, you know, heading, heading west on 419, as you're approaching this, making that turn, you know, I'm not, I know we have a light there at the fire station, but, you know, they're going to have to put some, some, some type of notice, there's a cut, you know, cars will be, who live there will be slowing down, trying to make that right turn in, so I'm sure you'll all work that out, you know?
Probably going to have to need a right-hand turn lane, I would assume.
Yeah, you're probably going to need a right-hand turn lane, something to, to make that in there, but-
We'll review that with the DOT as far as they'll-
But just to clarify, I want to say, I'd like to see what you have in mind, and it may be something, you know, sometimes people have something in their mind. I mean, right now, not seeing it, I say brick. Do we like Sanctuary? So it kind of looks like an extension of them, and it really doesn't look like, you know, it's something different. But bring it in, I'm sure these folks will come back and help us out with this, and we'll all make a good, good decision. I'd like to see what you have in mind, but I'm, I'm a fan in front of subdivisions of brick.
We, we agree with you. We're, we're more than willing to bring it back in, we would just like to explore what we might want to do.
I agree. We'll take a look.
And it may end up being brick, and, but we'll, you know, again-
I definitely like to see it. Sometimes people bring stuff in here, and we didn't want it, and it comes in, and oh, yeah, that looks good, something new and, and modern, and, you know, so let's, let's keep it, keep our minds open on it.
Counsel, Britton, anything?
So, yeah, I guess I'd like to start off on a process check. What, what is the sequence of events that allows us to see what the final rendering will be?
Well, they've got a lot of steps left, but- Mr. Cobb or Mr. Group?
Actually, I, Mr. Britton brings up a very good question, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the council, so maybe we can address some questions, because what Mr. Britton is asking is something that I think I need to, it's, it's a very comprehensive type of answer, that it might be better to hear if there's any other concerns by the other members of council, then I can address, address that, because there are some things that I need to inform you about, that goes along with what he's asking.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah. I, I think I'm reading here that this is going to be a gated community?
No, sir, I do not believe it will be.
All internal rights away within the residence will be private. What does that mean?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I'm reading, all, all internal right-ofways within the residential tract shall be private. The developer shall construct all streets for city standards and demonstrate a permanent funding mechanism.
Where are you looking at?
Correct.
Which one are you looking at?
I'm looking in the middle.
What, what that means is, is that the roadways will be designed and built to meet the city's minimum standards for construction of a roadway. However, the roads will not be dedicated to the city as public streets. They will be privately maintained. Hence the requirement that the subdivision demonstrate that they will have a mechanism, mainly a funding mechanism in place, to provide the same level of maintenance on the streets that the city would provide if they were public.
That's typical of a gated community, isn't it?
It's typical of a gated community, but I do not believe that this is proposed to be gated.
We would, as, as a matter of fact, we would like the ability to gate it. That decision hasn't been made yet. We'd like the ability to gate it. And then we'd also like the ability to have them be city streets, should we, you know, choose not to gate it. So-
All right, well, that, that'll, that leads to another, another question, but we'll, we'll have Brian address that, how that works. And I guess what I was leading up to is, if, if you were considering a gated community, what were you proposing? Just putting a gate up there with, with no other fencing around it?
No, there, there, there would be, you know, a long, there'd be an integrated buffer, wall, fence, landscaping, you know, with obviously signs up there at the entrance, on both sides of the entrance. I imagine, you know, there'll be an attractive entrance, just like you see up and down the road there. And again, that hasn't, you know, that hasn't been determined or, at this point, but there will be an integrated entry feature buffering from 419, and that's what we would like to be able to bring back to you for your approval.
But I kind of agree with Councilman Hankin, you know, it, I know what you're saying about there is a break with the retention pond, and, but consistency, as you go down the highway, I think would, would be nice to have a wall there, especially if you're going to gate it. I think it would be nice to provide that other, that amenity to a gated community. I think it just makes sense. But we'll let Brian answer the question on, on what the process is going forward.
And, and, you know, we're willing to, if it's necessary, and if this is acceptable to Brian, I mean, we're willing to, you know, not receive final engineering approval, you know, until, as a condition, until you all, you know, approve whatever wall slash fence buffering we have out on 419.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a really good point. I was reading that, and I was going to see if it came up, but, you know, I, I can't recall, and Mayor, you've been here long, long, so correct me if I'm wrong, but where, where developers would not gate and require the residents to take care of the streets. And to my second point, you know, we've had issues with, with this before with gated communities, and people not being able to take care of the streets. There have to be some serious funding in there, because when streets go bad, you know, you start hitting a resident, you're going to have to pay all this money, they're back at us thinking their city street's open. We've got to really think that one through-
Okay.
And figure out how we go, because if it's gated, then obviously the residents take care of the streets.
Well, personally, if they want to build private streets, and the people who buy in there are private streets, and public tax dollars don't have to take care of them, that's fine by me. I don't care if you're gated or not.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're exploring the market right now, MI Homes is, to determine whether they, they-
I do see the note in here that says the development will not be gated, though, after all of that-
Yeah, no, it says it won't be gated, but we've just got to make sure if we go, if you go that route, whatever funding source it, that you, that have, I mean, that's got to be ironclad.
We, we do want the ability, we do want the option at this point to, to do private gated streets, or have public streets if no gates.
Well, we'll see where this all goes. Counsel, one, do you have anything?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just, I'm kind of flying blind here, because I do remember when this came forward to us a few years ago, and there were a lot of discussions, and frankly, there was a lot of cooperation between the, the church, the owners of the property, and the surrounding community. And I think everyone left fairly happy with the results. And part of that, I think, was, was the buffer on the Sanctuary side and some sort of opacy on the side of the development. And what I'd like to see is some sort of equivalent in, in this development, too, so, but I don't know what that was at the time, so we'll have to go back and do some research and figure that out.
You know, again, we're, you know, we are changing the use, and it's not going to be a, you know, a large commercial shopping center, so it's, it is single-family against single-family.
You're good now?
That's good.
Counselwoman, anything? Counselman Schenk?
Uh, yeah. I, I would expect it. Well, I, I don't particularly have a pro- I, I think the elevation change, I disagree with the wall, simply because the elevation change in the layout, the trees that are there, existing trees, if you go by there now, there's dense forest of trees, that, to me, if you can save as many of those as you can up front, and utilize, you have a variety of fences that you've showcased in here, I don't know which, which you're planning or what your plan is, but it looked like picket-type in the front, that allows for some openness and to see through, but to me, that would be much better, in my opinion. Like I said, I, I think the elevation change is the biggest variable in that. You're not looking at, it isn't a consistent road that's flat-running, and again, I also look at a flat-running, consistent road that has just brick after brick after brick, is something that's maybe not the best also. So I, I'll disagree with the thought that, I believe it should be a fence. I will say, though, on the, on the back, I like tying from property end, basically, I'm going to just say in essence, from your property end to the water, to the wetland, they're going to put up a PVC fence in the back.
Yes, sir.
Essentially, I don't know where it will stop specifically, but-
But I would assume it would stop past Lot 25.
Yeah, I'm, I'm-
Well, it'll, it'll go to the wetland buffer.
Right, to where the, that's what I'm saying, I don't know exactly where, but to the wetland buffer, it'll be behind all the houses. I would, I, I'm trying to think of the density of the trees that go on the east side, where the two neighborhoods mi- mix, because the other side of it, once you start ripping, to put in a fence, you're ripping out the density that's already there to put in a fence or wall, and that's part of the reason why I prefer a fence back there, because the other thing is, it's going to require less density taken out. You might be able to keep some of the density. But on the side, I just not, in my head, I can't picture how dense that tree scape is, the, it's what, a 25-foot buffer between the two side yards, really, it's side yard to side yard, and actually, it's just one, realistically, one side yard and a turnaround. But I, I would say, as a concession, as an offer, you may look at that, fencing that, that, half that run on the east side down, to help ease the, the thoughts and the, the interactions between Sanctuary and the, and the enclave, i- is to put that in. Again, I, I don't really know that would be necessary, quite honestly, but give it some good consideration to say that possibly, a little bit of fencing, if it can lead to some goodwill, but I think there's a density enough there, personally, from my memory, that, that it's, you know, can, can do the job there. But again, I would say-
Excuse me one second. Folks, we can't have any outbursts. If there are, you will be asked to leave.
But that's where I'd say, you'd look to, for, you know, for a half a run down that line, basically, from tip to halfway down.
You're, you're talking about in, in the third?
Right there, yeah, exactly. You know, that, that to me would be, again, the same fencing as you're putting in the back. And again, I can see this PVC, I, I have no problem with PVC. We allow, our code allows, house to, you know, there's 25-foot buffer now, we allow house to house, don't remake the requirements. I would say that would be something you could do additional as part of this agreement. Put that in there. Again, I, I-
Just, just to help you out, Counselman Schenk, on that side of their property, there is a natural buffer.
There is a nat-, and that's right, I, I, I believe there is a natural buffer there.
It looks like you've got 25-foot or so or more on the Sanctuary side. What do you have on the Sanctuary side?
It's 25, it's a 25-foot buffer.
And what do you have on your side? Because it looks like there's a strip, it's got to be-
Yeah, there's a-
About like 12 or 10, yeah.
There's a small strip there to, before you hit our side lot line as well.
It'd be something to look at, like I said, I, the density may be there, or putting more density in trees on that side, if there's ability to, on your portion of it.
I mean, what, what-
To create more of a buffer in between, that, that's, there may be a natural buffer there.
On this side, what I would suggest, because again, you're going to run into the wetland, so you could go to the buffer there, what I would suggest is, is that if, if there is clear sightlines over to these folks, that, you know, you know, we could certainly here, now this is all open here-
That's open, I'm not concerned about, that part I'm not concerned about at all.
Certainly where the, where their, where their lots are, we could put in a PVC fence, if there's clear sightlines. If it's dense and you can't, you can't see, and I honestly don't know the answer to that.
And that's, I don't either, that's what I'm saying, I, I don't know it that far back in.
But, but we'd be willing to commit to the PVC fence if there's open sightlines.
Right. And I said, that, that's what I'd be looking for there. Otherwise, I see it as a, you know, there's 48,300 square feet of commercial going in there. It's a much less intensive use. You want the option, basically, to think about doing it private, is what I'm pulling out of this. I, that's your opinion, like I said, if you guys want to make it private, you take the roads off our hands, that, that's a, a choice. Like I said, the aesthetics out front, so I think we're trying to help Brian on this one, or what might be necessary in how to craft is, I, I really think you should work on the aesthetics part, part of it, and make it as aesthetically pleasing as possible. That's, I, I would say that's your goal, to try to sell these homes.
Sure.
I, I don't doubt that you'll do that in the end, but I, again, I don't know that, just saying that a brick wall is the answer to aesthetically pleasing all the time, I don't want to sit here and say that. I think there are other choices, and that seems to be, to me, again, because the elevation change seems to me to be inconsistent with that. It just builds that, that canyon up even higher as you're driving down it. So it makes a higher canyon, to me.
Well, I mean, if we can review that issue later, where you all have a chance to look at it, then we, you know, we can have renderings done by a landscape architect that, that would actually show, well, here's what it would look like if we did a brick wall, here's what it could look like if we did a, you know, a, a picket fence similar to live oak with landscaping, and we can just get together again and figure out which way you guys want to go with it.
I think we're turning this into a design review, I mean, we have-
And that's all I don't want to do. Like I said, it's, you know, he's asking for a little, a little bit of time and effort to be able to come back to us with some things, I think. And, and I'm more than willing to go, well, you know, if we get, if we have to approve those things and say, yeah, I have no problem doing that, and like I said, kicking the can down the road, but it's really putting the designs, keeping the options available that you still have to present to us, I have no problem with that as a process, it's coming back to us with those. But like I said, my, my, would be considering to the side, adding, at least considering looking at that buffer and making sure the sightline's on the right side, taking that into consideration for the future.
Okay.
And, well, I agree with Counselman Britton. We are getting, getting ahead of ourselves in terms of what step we are at in the process. However, this is an important part of this project. And, and to me, right now, I hear a lot of loose ends, and I, I don't like loose ends. I like it all on a nice little bow, tie it up, like we did with the commercial parcel, as Counselman Britton just stated. You know, private, not private, brick, this, that, the other thing, I'm, I'm just not sure I am comfortable right now, but why don't you have a seat? Let me go over to Mr. Cobb, let's see what our options are.
Cindy, do you have any questions? I don't got any.
She said no.
May I ask her?
Correct?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Cobb, what's the process here?
Okay. Actually, Mr. Bonus, could you put the other graphic back up onto the television? I think we're going to need that in just a few minutes. Okay, tonight, you're considering the master land use plan, it's amendment to an approved master land use plan, as well as an amended and restated non-sanctuary development agreement. In this case, this, you're approving the zoning regulations for this property. You're approving the minimum lot sizes, you're approving the setbacks, you're approving the buffering requirements, you're approving all those things that go into the minimum requirements for this project, both on the residential side as well as on the, on the church side. Obviously, they're not making any changes to what you've already approved under the church. One of the things I would like to call your attention to, actually, there were a couple of things as you were having your discussions. And so basically, Mr. Britton, to answer your question, the sequence of events is this. This master land use plan and development agreement constitute the preliminary subdivision plan for the subdivision, and it constitutes the master plan for the west, for the entire property. It also, with the development agreement, you're establishing your minimum site requirements. The next step on the, this side of the property, on the, on the residential side, they'll move into their engineering plans, the 100% engineering, where they'll go in, they'll figure out how we're going to put all the utilities in. And they'll put out the streets, the stormwater, all the engineering, all the engineering details that go into it. And then the next step after that is their final plat. On the west side of the property, they still have to do a site development order for their property, and then they would go through the normal building process. So that's the sequence of events. then they would go through the normal building process. So that's the sequence of events. So one of the things, I know you talked about getting ahead of yourself, but one of the things about this document, as far as the development agreement and the master plan, is that you want to set your minimum standards now. So if you want to set a standard for a wall, or you want to set a standard for a buffer, or you want to set a standard for a fence, this is the time to do it. Now, here's one of the things that I wanted to go over with you. In your packets on page 10 of your development agreement, and that's the reason I-
Which attachment is that, Brian?
I'm sorry, sir?
Which attachment?
It would be, I'm gonna have to get, attachment three, compressed PDF is what it's called. I'm sorry. No, your development agreement is going to be attachment one.
Attachment one.
Yes, sir.
NSDA doc.
NSDA, yes. You want to get that, you want to go down to page 10. And on page 10, there's a table. And you'll notice that the commercial part of that table's been taken out, but if you look on the church, it talks about the buffering of the church site, and it says the north, the north buffer. It's a B buffer. It, they're required to have three large trees and three medium trees, and/or small trees for 100 linear feet of buffer length, and a brick wall or PVC fence with a maximum height of six feet, except for the west 195 feet. Now, I want to call your attention to that, to the graphic above. The west 195 feet, that's the part that's the econ protection area. So if you go from the econ protection area, east to the very first lots, you've got a 15-foot buffer there. That 15-foot buffer has three large trees and three small or medium trees with, for every 100 feet, okay? And so then additionally to those trees, you're going to have a wall or PVC fence. I'm more inclined, in this situation, just due to the environmental concerns, I'm like Mr. Shank. I would lean more toward the PVC because it's less intrusive. When you look at the south, there's also, there's an A-type buffer down there. And looking at the property, you can see along the church site, there's a 10-foot A-type buffer there that's going to require trees. Now, it doesn't require a wall, but it does require trees. If you turn the page on to page 11, you get to what you've really been talking about, and that's section number four. And it talks about the brick wall or the PVC fence. And it says, "The north B landscape buffer on the church site and the north boundary of lots 25 through 31, as identified on the master land use plan, shall contain a brick wall or PVC fence in addition to the required vegetation, and the brick wall or fence must be located outside the wetland. If the PVC fence is constructed, the fence shall be constructed per the Miami-Dade County Notice of Acceptance provided in Exhibit C, which is the standards for the fence. It has to meet a higher wind load, is what it has to do. The maximum height of the brick wall or PVC fence shall be six feet, inclusive, exclusive of decorative features and appurtenances. The maximum height shall be the vertical distance measured from the grave at the base of the wall or fence to the highest point on the fence." Now, that's one of the things about, so when you look at, if you start at that line, 195 feet in, and I'll get up and-
Yeah, come and point that out.
Back to his planner, planner role.
Yeah, you're in your element now, Brian.
Actually, I think city manager fits him better.
Yeah. If it starts here, if you start here, we move this over just a tad, so you can see the west side of the property. If you start here on the west side of the property, 195 feet, that's our econ protection area. There's nothing going in there. Now, we start to pick up along through here, this is the, this is required on the church side. This is where the fence is required, potential brick walls required in here, in addition to the truths that I told you about as far as the large trees and stuff. Now, we'll get to see those, from the staff, we'll get to see those most likely from the site development order. You set the minimum standards for that buffer in your development agreement, saying it's gonna have three large trees, and a minimum of three medium or small trees for 100 linear feet. So the church might have to provide that buffer in addition to any fencing or wall. One of the things you may want to think about is looking at this project as a whole. You may want to have the developer work with the church to make sure that it's an consistent type of opaque structure. That's what I thought right now in terms of the side. So what was added-
Just don't call it 100% opaque.
That's correct. Now, talk this out, but the second part that I told you about, this is a clear one that-
That's just not possible with trees.
And when you get over here to lots 25 through 31, that's where that was altered. Once again, it comes down to this. As you notice, if you listen to the table, the buffering requirement was removed, only because you got the buffer on the sanctuary side. And you also have single-family residences, it's a single-family residential. However, they did put in the clause that on lots 25 through 31, this is right here, here, that they would put a fence or brick wall in along the upper property line. So you're going to get some tactical passivity. You don't have the pre-requirement anymore, but you will be getting some tactical passivity. That is the minimum requirement that you require in your development plan.
The existing, the existing development agreement.
It even has lots-
Okay.
Look at what's the other line. The other line is what's being added to that section four there. Okay, now, when we get over here to these lots, 21 through 24, one of the things I want to call attention to, here's the wetland line. Now, you gotta remember, we're in the econ basin. So in the econ basin, we have a requirement on that one. You have to have an upland buffer that is an average of 50, a minimum of 25. And one of the things that they've done, is look through here, you have the upland buffer around that button. That's why I was talking about separation. There's a range of separation. You have this button, the button coming down, and you have the upland buffer. And so then, here, you've got stormwater behind that. So, once again, but they also, you're still, it does, that number four doesn't address those lots. And the fact is that you got natural there that they have to work with as far as the buffer is concerned. When you get down here on the east side of the property, once again, you've got the wetland system, you've got a natural buffer already there. And then, what I was talking about, this can't be that's the upland area, right? So this area here is the upland area on the wetlands. So the wetlands, I believe, start, I remember breaking the wetlands. It's been a while since I've looked at it.
Starts on the other side.
Yes, sir. The wetlands basically start right in this area. So on this side, you've got the upland area, and then this other side. So also, you do have, so maybe that I want to stress to you tonight, along county road 419, as you can see, and it's something Mr. Madden mentioned too, there's an area here that's set aside along the front of 419. Plus, you also have the stormwater pond here as well. There's an area, the houses you set back on county road 419. One of the things you can talk about is establishing a minimum standard for that area. You want to set, I've heard, brick wall, the system on Sanctuary, I've heard, well, maybe you'll listen to something different, let's set this apart. So this is the time that you want to say, tell them, this would be the minimum standard. Obviously, you don't have that discussion with them, because what you can do with the minimum standard. I would tell you that in your land development, if you have, if you have wall, the land development says that it'll be brick. That's why in this development agreement, it says brick wall or PVC fence. Now, when this was done back five, six years ago, there was a big concern about PVC fences blocking, because we've just come out of the storms. And so that's why this development agreement has the Miami-Dade requirement off. If this PVC fence would be a lot stronger, then like you might, when we get it out to Humvee, or go to the Lowe's, we'll pick out. So it's kind of a stronger fence there. So one of the things I would advise you is, is that look at those buffers as they're laid out. Obviously, notice that they can't go into those. Okay? So the fencing would have to be along, that's why I was saying, I would almost, if you go around the back of the properties, I would say do the fencing, so that you're less intrusive for all the natural buffers that are required. But along the front, you can work with the buffer to do that. Now, let's talk about Mr. Madden. Many have a recommendation, well, we'll bring it back to you. We'll let you, we'll let you take a look at it. What you want to do is, you want to specify in your development, you want to specify, like Mr. Madden said, you mentioned, before we can issue your approval, we'll have the landscape architect come out, and we'll bring you our buffer. You need to state, you need to state that in your development agreement, that prior to what we call site construction level two approval, or issuance of the site construction level two permit, they will, the developer will bring forward, landscape plans, buffer plans, however you want to state it, but you want to say that would be added to your development, if you want to do that. So you can, you can either do it that way, or you can set your minimum standards here. You can also say, you can give them, you can talk with them, and give them directions, say, go for it, and bring us back standards so we can approve. You can do that as well. So, Mr. Britton, I hope I forgot, no, I get your, maybe I also wanted to run you around the property and tell you about how it works, but this is the time, if you have, and specifically if you want to, this is the time to lay the ground hard for it.
That's clear as mud.
It's opaque.
That's 100% opaque. Deputy Mayor.
Okay. Dave, could you do me a favor? Could you just move this out of the way for a second, so I can see some of these folks? I just wanted to bring up one point. Now, you all live out in Sanctuary. You all, once in a while, go over to the Riverside Market that, that development. And the reason I ask for brick, we have that PVC fencing behind there. Have you all seen what it looks like? Even the parts that are not broken, that hasn't been put up, it looks terrible, and it doesn't stand up. And, you know, I hear about the Miami-Dade standard, but I know animals don't go through brick walls. Riverside along there, southern portion, has a brick wall. You guys all have a brick wall. So I was willing to keep my mind open, but city manager says we got to put that in there. So I haven't heard from my other four, but I've seen what PVC fence along wetland area, which is what's behind there, what it looks like after just a few months, and it does not look pretty. And, you know, the developer out there, who I know well, is getting a little aggravated with it, you know, having to fix it. Some of it, I will give you, was vandalized, but the pieces that are, that are there, that have just been subject to the weather, they look terrible. So for me, I want my other colleagues to weigh in. You know, it's a small development. I think it would give peace of mind to the people who are in the Sanctuary, it would give peace of mind to somebody who would buy in there. And it's going to be a very attractive place for somebody to want to live. So all you have to do is go right beyond Riverside Market, and you'll see what a commercial PVC fence looks like after a couple of years, and it's not pretty. So, you know, my thought is wall, if I have to make the decision tonight. My mind was open, but he says we can't do that, so.
We can. We can say wall or fence, like he's asking, that's all. We can just say wall or fence, and give them the minimums tonight, and then require them to come back with designs. That's basically what Brian said, was we can give them, set our minimums tonight, and then come back with, if we need him to. But whatever the minimums would be.
My name is David Axel with Axel Real State, 1757 West Broadway Street, Oviedo. Also speaking on behalf of the applicant. I understand council's concerns here. I also understand the desire of the applicant and MI Homes to move this project forward. So in order to get past this point, because I don't think we're going to design the entry feature tonight, we can very simply, with the concurrence of your staff and council, if we can do this, we've got on page 11 of the Exhibit 1 of the resolution, number four, which talks about a brick wall and the north landscape buffer. We could simply add, change that to 4A and have a 4B, which would be a brick wall or alternative treatment along the south side of the residential tract, because we're only here tonight about the residential tract, requiring a brick wall from the edge of the road eastward to the edge of the upland buffer, because we can't put something in the upland buffer of the wetland, or an alternative treatment satisfactory to council before issuance of, Ryan, what was the next step?
Site construction level two.
A site construction level two permit. That way, it's either brick, like we hear the majority of council speaking about, or they come back in front of you and present an alternative that everybody can visually see. If that works for everybody, I think we can proceed with this project. Thank you.
Does anybody on council have anything else?
I got one final concern, about lax, lack of buffers along the north side. It seems like that any HOA maintenance will, would have to encroach on the Sanctuary easement to do any maintenance, if there is any, anything back there that needs to be maintained. So my concern is how you would have access to the back of the development, and frankly, on the east side, for maintenance of any common areas, or frankly, access to the property.
Mr. Madden, do you have an answer to that?
Yes, we would propose a five-foot wall easement along that property line, and so that it could be, and that would be dedicated to the HOA, mandatory HOA, that would be responsible for maintenance.
Okay, so it's an easement, other, rather than what I would, you know, it's like a buffer versus easement, but, okay.
Thank you. All right. Does anybody have any other questions for the applicant? All right. Folks, I do not have any written requests to speak on this item. Technically, on resolutions, we do not have public comment. I am going to bend the rules and give those of you who'd like to speak just a brief minute or two to address the council. This isn't, there's no reason to become hostile, get upset. I mean, you've heard us trying to work through this issue. They obviously are willing to put buffers up. I must say that this is more difficult than it was when we approved a commercial plan out there, which I, for the life of me, don't understand. But be that as it may, I will open this up. Who would like to address council? Anybody? Come on, Bill.
You got a couple of lawyers that just took a stick out.
Ah, those are finance guys back there, actually. They're not, well, they might be, no, they're not lawyers. Those are the finance guys.
Yeah, there's one back there.
Is there a lawyer back there? Wait a second.
No, that's okay. Don't worry about it. I went to college. Bill Abita, 2625 Turtlehead Cove. My question, and it's a real simple one. Is there any variance or any, is the lack of no buffer on their end written in stone? That's all I'm asking. I understand residential or residential, now that you guys just, you know, brought that up. I understand that. But what I'm saying is, it's going to detrimentally affect at least three lots on that back end of that property. My lot, obviously, being one of them. And that's why I'm asking-
Less than a commercial project in your backyard? I'm just curious.
Depends on the commercial project.
Well, the one that was approved.
I, that was before me. I don't have any clue as to what was, what was approved and what wasn't.
40,000 square feet.
Okay.
I'm not trying to be argumentative.
No, no, and I understand that.
I'm just trying to broaden the discussion.
I understand that.
I just, I hate to ask questions, because it's terrible to do. But I'm sorry, is your question, you said-
All we have is 25 feet-
Right, you have 25 feet buffer currently, and there's nothing else required currently by code.
Correct.
That's your question? Yes.
Okay. And, and what I'm asking is, is that written in stone?
That's code.
That's code.
That is the code.
But you guys are setting the minimum standards now, as far as what you want.
We're adding, we're adding more by saying they're going to require a fence. We can require them to do more, and require them to-
We'll ask a question.
Can you require them to do a buffer? An additional buffer outside of the 25 feet? 25 feet is nothing. That, that, that area back there is not that dense. It is not that dense.
We got it. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mark Jones. My address is 2601 Turtlehead Cove. I live on the northern boundary of this property. My, my home is on the western portion, but I know a lot of the residents along Turtlehead and the other side, one of our concerns is consistency. And if, I know that Mr. Cobb said that there will be a fence along the western side or a wall. I prefer a wall. It looks like I'm gonna have a pond in my backyard. I've got a three-year-old and a one-and-a-half-year-old. And I know the cove is pretty unique. There's probably over a dozen children under the age of 10 in that, that area of this community. I know there's a lot of young kids there. So I'd like to see something that's going to keep them away from that pond. And then, if you're gonna put a wall there, it should extend all the way over and be uniform.
You're on the commercial side, as I already said?
Yes, sir.
I think that's the church property is what he's looking at.
Correct, the church property.
Right.
I don't-
That's not going to be developed now.
It's going to be developed down the road, and if you're laying down-
That already has a fence. That already has a fence attached to it.
My point, like I said in the very beginning, is I'd like to see conformity-
Okay, you then said about having a three-year-old. I just was wondering, I was just making sure you understood the, I'm sorry.
I'm with you.
You kind of switched. That's why I was, I was making sure.
Conformity.
Yeah, that it's uniform, that it's a uniform fence across.
Correct. And just since I'm up here, man, I like the brick wall along the front as well. It conforms with the rest of the Sanctuary on that property. It just looks better.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Johani Pimental, and I live at 2617 Turtlehead Cove. And again, like the other residents, I'm asking for consistency. And the 25 buffer, actually, the day they were there measuring, and we have trees, I could actually, I could actually see them measuring from my kitchen. So it's not that- So, it's not that much of a buffer, you know. I'm also concerned about, is there gonna be stipulation about the height of the houses that they will build?
Two stories.
They will be two stories.
Thirty-five feet is the max, right? Something like that, read in the report, two stories.
So, if there is no, you know, that big buffer, they're actually gonna be looking at us, and I'm like, right there.
We'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else, sir?
Harry Heberkamp, 2593 Turtlehead Cove. I am the neighbor of Mark Jones, so that north property affects me also, and I agree with all of our residents that conformity is where we need to be, and safety, a brick wall will be there forever.
Thank you.
Jeff Townsend, 965 Sagal Palm Cove. Not along there, but within support of our neighbors and our tight-knit community on what we affectionately call ourselves as the Cove. We just want the conformity of, you know, there, and I've been in the sanctuary for over 10 years, and we lived in the front section with a brick wall behind us that was very nice when we lived backing up to the middle school and the kids together, and it would just be great to have that same type of thing where I live now, and the reason we purchased on the corner of two cul-de-sacs, so, thank you.
Anybody else?
Connor Lewis, 2585 Turtlehead Cove. I just wanna echo what my neighbors are saying, that we appreciate the conformity aspect as well as the construction of a brick wall, if at all possible. Thank you.
Mr. Cobb, what is currently, I'm just trying to remember, between the, between suites fire and the firehouse, what's in the backyard there, those homes?
I believe they're individual fences. I believe the individual fences of the properties. I don't think there's a wall.
It's a wall. It's a wall. I assume it's fire, it's a wall.
PVC, though?
No.
It's brick.
The administration building was back, right, was PVC. One on the far east side is a brick wall.
East side, that's it.
All of it.
So, Chief, you're saying it's from the firehouse forward, it's brick? And then, as you get towards the admin building, behind the admin buildings PVC?
Behind the admin buildings PVC, to the east of the property is brick.
Okay, all right, so the length of the property, it's brick? From the front to the back, but running along Spring Heather, it's PVC?
Looks like the city put in the PVC fence and the development put in the brick wall?
We did, and we added whole-size oak trees, and I think they were the best, um, setting them with these, or like, uh, uh, uh...
All right, so we put that fence in the whole length of our property?
Correct.
Well, the width of our property, and then the depth of our property was the brick wall.
Right, and the sanctuary, it was a brick wall.
Okay.
That was there before we...
Right, yeah, that was there before we built the firehouse. I'm just trying to establish consistency, because I do agree with that 100%, as we stated earlier. Mr. Madden, you can address the people's concern.
Where the firehouse is, I think there is a, a brick wall in the back, but again, and even when, what's approved out, out there today for the commercial use is in here, that is now, of course, being changed, is worded as, as a brick or wall. The other thing that everyone's talking about, a brick wall, now along the sanctuary's frontage on 419, for the most part, continually there, except where you have, like, the school and the firehouse and things, it's a brick wall. But nowhere in the sanctuary is there a brick wall that separates like-kind uses, which would be single-family against single-family. If you go all the way back into the sanctuary, there's all different-sized lots, there's places where you have 50-foot lots that back right up to a common property line of 75-foot wide lots, there's no PVC fence, there's no brick wall, because they're like-kind uses. And so, for, as a consistency issue, I would think that it's reasonable that, you know, doing a, even a six-foot PVC fence is, is more than any situation that you have in the whole sanctuary subdivision.
Yeah, but, Mr. Madden, with all due respect, we've seen what PVC handles after it being up. Go take a ride across from Riverside and look at the PVC fence all along that wetland area, and look what it looks like. I mean, I hear where you're going, but who's, you know, that thing will have to be, you know, replaced every couple of years. I've seen it, I live and breathe it every day.
Well, I think that's why they, they now specify the Miami Dade, is that it's, it's much more structurally sound, and sure, like anything, if a wall or a fence gets mold on at the HOA, needs to clean it. But the Miami Dade fence is a heavy, heavy-duty fence that we're familiar with...
I think that's, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, we, I mean, that's a pretty new development, Riverside Shopping up there, and I'm pretty sure that's Miami Dade, it's been kicked through, and it looks like hell. I mean, so for me, aesthetically, I hear where you're going, but that was a different time, and this is a different time, and it doesn't seem fair to you, but it doesn't hold up, that's the problem.
Does anybody else have anything? Councilman?
I'd just like to chime in a little bit, after listening to all this. I agree with what we've heard up here about the consistency and bringing, and I like the brick wall, I agree with Deputy Mayor, that the brick wall does look much nicer than a PVC fence. And also, if we're looking at the back, I'm not looking at this, I can't tell where the pond is that this gentleman talked about, but I do believe that safety is a number-one concern.
Right, the pond he was talking about is on the church property.
It's, it's over...
It's, it's not built, and frankly, it's out of our control.
Oh, I'm thinking like, and I don't know how we do this, is to have that consistency when the church does, when they do develop and, and they need to put up a brick wall also, it needs to be the same type of wall. I don't know where we, how we go about that, do we do that tonight, or do we do that another time?
Well, we'd like, we'd like the ability, again, to, we'd like the wording to stay open, as Mr. Axel suggested, with a, with a brick wall or PVC fence, and allow us to come back to you all.
And that's fine, I, I'm open to suggestions, I'm just telling you what I'm thinking right now.
Okay.
You know, I, I do like the uniform look, and keep as many trees as you possibly can, and natural borders are always a plus.
Right.
But I appreciate all the effort that you're putting into this, I know it's, it's difficult.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, we, I, I think we need to, just, again, they're asking us to be, give them a little flexibility, and they bring designs, I think we should do that, and look at, maybe look at some of the places we already have required these PVC fences, we've done it up by Panther, we've done it up a couple, between a couple of different neighborhoods to neighborhoods, that we've required the hurricane, these fences, that are ready. So, I think we should give them the ability to come back, but we still have the final say on which one it is, as far as the frontage look, like I said. Give them the opportunity to, I'll disagree just with the look, like I said, it's, it's an interesting, so, and I can understand wanting the brick, but let them give an opportunity to decide what looks best, they're gonna try to sell it, so they're gonna want something that looks good. If it doesn't look good, I don't, and I don't particularly like PVC fences, to be honest with you. I just think that the covering that frontage up does more harm than good, in my opinion. So, give them the opportunity to do that, and have them come back, as they've, they've asked, and we said we can do, if the, I'm trying to, I wrote it down somewhere, but again, but have them come back to us, and get that, get that looked at, but have renderings, have some sort of renderings that we can see it better, rather than just based on, well, I don't like, I don't think I like brick fences right there, I, you know, I like brick, it's gonna be better there. If they can show you something that looks good, why not? If they can't, then we still have the final authority.
Well, you brought up a good point, though, that, that, you know, as everybody rides by there, you know, it's very dense there, but my understanding is, those trees in the front where this is gonna be, they're gone. I mean, so, there, there isn't gonna be a heavy buffer there. That's why, I mean...
Let me, let me try to wrap this, it's meandering now. Mr. Madden, why don't you come on up here a second? I don't think there's a council member up here or a resident in the audience who disagrees with you that homes are a preferred use for the site, rather than a large commercial center. I think the issue that we're struggling with is how we aesthetically make your subdivision, match what's there, and then create consistency with the church. Now, when we did the church and the commercial, we did it together. It, it, it all came into us as one, and we were able to create consistency. That's why I, I, I said it half-jokingly before, but I really meant it, it was easier to do that than it is to do this, because now you're changing a use that everybody was accustomed to. You know, that, that, that discussion was had, it was put to bed, there were walls all around the thing, because it was commercial, there was an additional buffer in the back between the two, that you're not gonna have now, because it's not commercial, you're not required to have it. I understand that. I, I, I disagree a little bit because of the way the uses will tie together, but it's the fear of the unknown. You're not showing us anything. We, we're not seeing anything, the residents aren't seeing anything. You know, you could easily build, you know, a little 10-foot buffer across the back there on your side to complement the 25-foot buffer that's on their side. We did that up in, what's the one up in the north there? Black Hammer Preserve. We have, between neighborhood and neighborhood, the developer Kyle something, took 10 feet off of his side, and because the, actually, the Twin Oaks side had no buffer whatsoever, and added an additional buffer between the two. So, yes, it's not required, I do agree with you 100%, used-to-use, you can travel throughout the sanctuary, I mean, heck, we can look at the drawings right here, there, there isn't any. But here's the difference, you know, they're the sanctuary, you're the enclave, you're different, you have to work, work together, you know. Ideally, it would've been nice, you could've sucked it all into the sanctuary and just made it part of it, but that's not possible, you're not gonna cross those wetlands over there. We understand that. You know, our residents have concerns, and as much as we like to work with everybody as best we can, we answer to our residents.
Sure.
So, but I think that what I've heard from the council, and I'm gonna paraphrase for them, if I paraphrase it wrong...
Can I ask one question of Brian?
Sure.
Brian, this is, the agreement is a non-statutory development agreement between Covenant Presbyterian and them, and us, isn't it?
That's correct.
Can't we require them, they're gonna put up the fence, they require Covenant to put it up at the same, at the same time?
You can put that into the agreement.
We can put this in, can't we?
Yes, sir.
They're gonna have to, that's the way it goes, we can require them, because it's a three-way agreement, and just say, they have to put it up at the same time.
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
As I was going to paraphrase, you know, we, we need to do this as a comprehensive site plan. And you need to bring to us renderings of a comprehensive site plan. You know, what's, what is the entranceway gonna look like, how you gonna enter into it, what are your plans? Are you gonna make it private roads, are you gonna make it public roads? You know, are you gonna gate it, are you not gonna gate it? I don't, I don't think the issue is the 32 homes. I, I just think it's the presentation of how it all ties together. Now, you know, I don't disagree with you either, I'll keep an, an open mind. The front of Live Oak, and I'll date myself, I mean, I was on LPA when we were approving that way back when, you know, Live Oak had that big natural buffer to work with on 419, which is why they don't have the running wall. Now, I'll date myself again, when the sanctuary was coming through, they were building homes right up to 419, so the wall was required. We don't know how you're gonna fit in there yet, and you can tie that all together. So, what I am hearing, I believe from the council, is that we are willing to approve what's here, we are gonna put the requirement in there that you're going to bring it all back to us, you're gonna show us what you're doing. I'm hearing the residents say they prefer brick, I'm hearing the residents say they prefer a buffer in the back, so you got your work cut out for you. You know, in my opinion, when you come back here, you need to address their concerns, you know.
Well, we would like, we would...
I don't, I don't think that's, do you feel that's an unreasonable request?
No, no, in fact, in fact, what I would recommend is that, I, we don't mind the condition in there, that it's gonna come back and be reviewed beyond this, we do need approval tonight because of some contractual obligations, but we don't mind coming back, and I would...
Mr. Madden, that's the wrong thing to say. I, I'll be honest, I mean, can I be frank? I, I don't care about your contractual obligations.
Fair enough. I, what I would like to do...
Don't, don't say that to the residents that are here, because they don't care about your contractual obligations.
Well, what I was gonna say is, is with the condition in there that we, we are gonna come back before you all, we would, what I would recommend is, we would like to, you know, everybody that's here tonight, we'd like to get their information and meet with them before we come back with you all, and try to get us all on the same page. So, that's what we're more, we're more than willing to do.
That sounds like a point.
We, we'd like to build consensus.
Their president's sitting right there on the end, wave Sandy.
Okay. Well, yeah, we will get her information, and then we'll have a, before we come back before you all, we're gonna work on getting everybody on the same page.
All right, I appreciate it. Mr. Mayor? Okay, so how do we put that? Make a motion? I don't know, I'm gonna go over to Brian.
All right, well, let Brian give us some words.
Make a motion, we need a motion, right?
Just tell us how to...
We need an amended motion.
Well, we need to make a motion, and then we'll amend a motion.
Need a motion to approve Resolution Number 2660-13, requiring a fence or wall along the back.
Well, I think, I think we can make it simpler, why don't you just make the motion? Let's see where the motion goes, and then...
To approve the motion. I'll take out that. Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2660-13, I'll stop it there, but we'll, we'll add...
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Cobb, can you give us the additional language that we need that will address the residents' concerns, bring it back to us for final approval before they go any further? For Councilman Schenck, and if the motioner and second are agree, we'll add it to the motion.
Okay, Mayor, there's one thing I need to tell you before I get into that. I made a mistake earlier during my, during my presentation. This plan does not have enough detail on it to qualify as preliminary subdivision plan. So, Mr. Britton, getting back to your original question, what's the next step? Next step beyond this is a preliminary subdivision plan, which we'll have to come back to City Council, which, this may help. You can require that, through this development agreement, you could require that the preliminary subdivision plan contain the necessary landscaping plans, which will give you what you've been asking for as far as the renderings, and as well as address the residents' concern, provide a buffer plan within there. So, I apologize that I thought this was to that level, I didn't realize that we had a preliminary subdivision plan coming in behind it.
Brian, as long as we have a second step, it doesn't matter what the...
So, I guess the big thing...
Second step is, but we, we appreciate you pointing that out.
I think the thing to do, you obviously have the rec, the, what Mr. Axel recommended, that you could go in and amend this paragraph four on page 11, to state that it would be brought in prior to issuance of a site construction level 2 permit, but I think it would be better that...
Just do it before...
You just say that language be added, that it be addressed during the preliminary subdivision plan for the property.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make it... Hang on one second, Mr. Britton. I'm sorry, Mr. Cobb, did you have anything else?
Uh, no, sir, that was just that you would want to, you could just, as far as, keep trying to keep it as simple, that...
Let's just keep it simple.
That your motion would require the amendment... That your motion would require the amendment to be, the agreement to be amended before execution that would state that the preliminary subdivision plan for the residential property will contain buffer slash landscape plans that will...
Address all the concerns brought up at this hearing.
That... Right, that will address all the issues regarding landscaping, buffering, fences, walls, that, for the subdivision. That they'll have to bring that to you.
Let me just go over to Councilman Britton. Sir?
Yeah, my concern was that we, you know, we, and thank you, Brian, for correcting yourself, that we somehow notate in our motion that we did assume we had, this was the final approval, but that we do have this extra step in there. I think what Brian says does document that so that we don't come back later and say we had a technicality that breached the procedure or protocol. But I think what you said, Brian, covers all of those bases.
Yes, sir. Councilman Schenck, how would you like to amend your motion?
I'd like to amend my motion.
I saw you riding away over there.
Preliminary subdivision plans will contain both landscape, both landscaping plans, including landscaping buffers, fences, and walls for approval by council.
Final approval.
Final approval by council.
All right. Second are agree?
Yes.
Can you add in there that they will also meet and work with the residents?
And they will meet and work with the residents to find the issues.
Oh, now we're getting there. Second are agree?
Yes.
All righty. We have a motion amended by the motioner and the secondor. Any other discussion? Mr. Axel, are you clear? Is that good? Mr. Madden, are you clear? All right.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask one point of clarification?
Ah, I almost had it.
Regarding the preliminary subdivision plan containing landscape plans, do you wish to have that language inserted into the agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
How we were all on the same page. How long till the PSP comes to us? Brian, I guess that's up to them.
I believe it's in review now, so it'll be a little while when it comes back.
One last thing is, if the motioner and the secondor will agree, it just came to me, they should try to look at this as a comprehensive plan between them and the church as well.
We encourage you to do that. That's just an encouragement.
Do you agree? Good? Secondor?
And that would address this gentleman's concern with the pond and the...
Well, there isn't a pond yet.
There isn't a pond, is there?
But I'm just saying, when they build, what you're saying right now makes the church, should, when they start to build down the road, whatever treatment we do along the back will run past the western part, correct?
Let them go talk to the church, and they'll figure it all out. It'll all be good. All right. Brian, we got all the, we're good?
Yes, sir.
To my left, good?
Yes.
All righty. All those in favor of this motion that's been amended three times and beaten to death, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those motion carries. All righty, folks, we're going to take a five-minute break. Okay, we're hot. All righty, if everybody can take a seat. Thank you. We are back in session. We are on item number 13, which is Resolution Number 2690-13, the issuance of Public Improvement Revenue Notes Series 2013. Mr. Cobb, I'll turn it over to you for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for the City Council to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of Public Improvement Refunding Revenue Note Series 2013 in an amount not to exceed $3,900,000 and approve the initial draw of $51,000 to pay expenses associated with the cost of issuance. On May 20th of 2013, the City Council, the staff requested authorization to work with the city's financial advisor to work toward potentially obtaining a bank-qualified, tax-exempt line of credit. An RFP was issued on May 31st, 2013, and full responses were received. At its July 15th, 2013 meeting, the City Council adopted Resolution Number 2676-13, awarding the RFP to TD Bank, N.A. Thus, all preliminary actions necessary to the public hearing have occurred. I would like to note with you that the city charter does address the management of city finances and city borrowing. And just would like to read to you just a little section from Section 4.08-11. And what it states is that the city shall be permitted to issue revenue bonds, notes, certificates of participation, lease purchase contracts, or other instruments of indebtedness by the affirmative vote of four city council members at a public hearing held prior to the issuance of such bonds, provided that the total amount of indebtedness does not exceed $5 million for infrastructure in any one calendar year, and that the city's independent financial advisor certifies that debt limitations as prescribed in city ordinance are not exceeded. The reason I brought that up is I wanted to tell you that the $3.9 million that's being requested through this line of credit is within your limitations that are prescribed within the charter. The, just a little bit about, the first two years of the note are the drawdown period, and will be a floating rate of interest equal to 69% of the London Interbank offered rate plus 65 basis points. At the end of the drawdown period, the provisions of the note allow the conversion of the loan to a fixed rate for the life of the financing, subject to a pricing index of 69% of the Federal Reserve's seven-year swap rate plus 96 basis points. The city may prepay the note in whole or in part of any, on any date with five days prior written notice to the holder without a premium prepayment penalty. This affords the city maximum flexibility with the market should the transition of a fixed rate not be the best available, best deal available to the city at the time of the conversion. In your staff memorandum, we put in here, the proceeds of the note will be drawn down on an ad nees basis. And we provided for you how we came up with the $3.9 million. We listed for you six projects. Center Lake Park with $1,250,000, our new fire station, $1 million, lights on the OSC fields, $650,000, our community center, $750,000, and then engineering services for the remodeling of the public safety building at $250,000, for a total of $3,900,000. Interest on the note will be paid quarterly commencing October 1st, 2013, and ending October 1st, 2013, and ending on October 1st, 2015. Commencing on April 1st, 2016, interest on the note will be paid semi-annually on April 1st and October 1st until the note is paid in full. Based on the best estimates available at this time, the interest is projected to be $625 for fiscal year 2013, $45,165 for fiscal year 2014, and $147,217 for fiscal year 2015. Beginning on October 1st, 2016, and thereafter, on each October 1st, principal and interest, principal on the note will be paid in 13 equal annual installments based on the actual principal amount outstanding on October 1st, 2015. It is recommended that City Council conduct a public hearing and adopt Resolution Number 2690-13. Mayor, I would also like to tell you that with us tonight, we have the city's financial advisors, Mr. Mark Galvin and Mr. Gary Akers. We also have Mr. Jerry Boop, our finance director. And then we also have Ms. Misty Taylor, an attorney with Bryant, Miller &amp; Olive, who is our bond counsel with us tonight to assist the council with this discussion as well as consideration of the resolution. And with that, Mayor, that is the conclusion of my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I guess Mr. Labado was right. There was a lawyer in the back, so. Do we have any other presentations, Brian?
No, sir. Our experts are here to address any questions that council may have.
All right. I have no request to speak on this item. I will open it up. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address council? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing portion, and I will move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Britton?
I'll make a motion to accept Resolution 2690-13.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilman Britton, you have the floor.
I think this is, just, really don't have any comments on it, but I think this is prudent. It's a good way to leverage the good credit we have and provide us some flexibility. I know a couple weeks ago, we kind of took some flexibility away when we set the millage rate as low as we did, which I think was also prudent. But this allows us some flexibility to do some of the major projects we've got on our list of things to do without having to phase them out over several years. We can go do the projects and then pay for them with this low interest rate.
Anything else?
That's it.
Councilman, you are the second, right?
Yes. Yes. Well, I'd like to thank Robin and Jerry for spending so much time on the phone with me, bringing me up to date and talking me through all this. This is quite a lot of money. And I was reassured, and, not reassured, but we talked about how important it is that we don't go too far ahead. We borrow the money, and all these projects are very, very important. And I see that they are all projects that will outlive the loan. Is that right, Jerry? So, that's a good investment. We just don't, we want to take it carefully and slowly. We just don't, we want to take it carefully and slowly, so we don't bury ourselves or get underwater, making sure that we're going to be able to pay it back. I think it's a good deal. I think that having that basic line of credit, is that what we could look at it for as a It's fantastic, and I think it's a good deal.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Chek?
Got a couple of questions. How much will the two thousand and sixteen be estimated? What would the payment be for two thousand and sixteen? We've estimated some things, so I'm sure we estimated two thousand and sixteen. Somebody did, somewhere, I'm sure.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Jerry Boop, Finance Director, City of Alvedo. Beginning on the period of ten one, two thousand and sixteen, the estimated debt service will be a total of three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, nine hundred and ninety dollars. The principal will be two hundred and sixty thousand, and the interest applied against that principal will be ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety, to come up with that total. The coupon rate that we're estimating right now, that will, the interest rate, excuse me, will be two point four one zero percent at the time that we do the conversion.
So in two thousand and sixteen, from general fund, we're getting three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars approximately?
Three hundred and fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety, and it declines slightly. The maximum annual debt service looks to be right around three hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred roughly, over the life of the repayments.
Can we use this, the councilman kind of said, and it was said to me different ways as we spoke, again, I appreciate the time you guys gave me, that it's kind of like a, I'll say, line of credit. Can we utilize these for other things?
Such as?
I don't know. It was, you guys said, within the same circumstance as anything that's tax-free or a tax exempt that we can kind of, but then when George gave back an email, it seemed that that wasn't exactly, I got, the email from George kind of made it, didn't seem the same to me.
Okay, this is a tax exempt note.
Want me to address that?
Sure.
Okay. Well, what you're approving tonight would be-
I'm sorry, name and address.
Misty Taylor, Bryant, Miller, Olive.
Thank you.
What you would be approving tonight are the projects that was listed in the attachment? I mean, that's your reasonable expectation when you issue the debt. I mean, when you issue tax-exempt debt, one of the requirements is that you have to have an expectation of spending the money on a project that has the useful life, and plus your charter has the capital improvement requirement. So, down the road, if you wanted to substitute a project, you could do that, the council could approve that. You're not, you don't have to live and die by the list or the draw schedule that you have tonight, but this is what you reasonably expect on the date of closing to be, when and how you're going to spend the money. But, things could happen, you know, some of the projects could go away, you know, your priorities may change, but so long as it meets the tax code requirements for a project to be financed with tax-exempt debt, yes, you could substitute projects.
Right, because when I saw the email from George, it almost seemed to tighten that up to me, that's why I was wondering. I wasn't sure how.
Well, to maybe clarify, in case that was a little muddy, the question I think posed was, does each drawdown on the loan get approval by the council? The answer to that is no, but if you wanted to, you know, shuffle around the projects, you know, the documents provide that the city manager will sign an advance request and list, you know, what that advance is for and what it is.
My actual question was to George, so you know, I asked George, I wanted to add, I'm not comfortable with the list. I think it's very, we don't have a lot of specifics on this list. The community center, at this point, is double that. I believe the, we don't have really any drawings, any, and forget monetary on the Center Lake Park. Lights on the field, I'm fine with, because actually, after talking to Drew and telling him, I would assume that it pays for itself, it does, and then some. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for engineering for modeling the public safety building. I think we need to look at some other things and ways we may be able to do some things. So I'm just very uncomfortable in approving this, and then, A, having that ability that you just said, that we could shift this around, it's a, when we approve, when we got approval for this right, as I look at it, it wasn't to avoid bonding, it wasn't to avoid going to the people. At the time, it was based on, during hurricanes and et cetera, we had to fork out a lot of money and wait for money to come back at us, and it was pretty much so that we could either take advantage of opportunities that were out there for us. So I asked the question, can we add to this, that it become a four one, it requires a supermajority for people to approve the expenditure? Obviously, the expenditure does have to come back to us, I believe, does it not? When we actually are going to go spend the money?
No, no, each draw request doesn't have to come back to you, but let's say, for example-
The expenditure does, though. The expense, when we're going to go to the expense side, not on the draw per se.
Yes, right.
But we're going to have the opportunity to spend the money, that's, you know, to me, it's, I wanted to put in a, that's why I asked the question of George, and he had answered it, to put in some, to keep the same lines as, we got a four one here, and then keep the four one throughout spending this money. That was my concern.
Yeah, but I believe the answer to that was no.
The, well, yeah, the supermajority requirement just relates to the issuance of the debt, which is what you would be approving tonight. Tonight would be when it requires the supermajority. I assume you all could agree to whatever you want on a going-forward basis, but it wouldn't be required for that.
Mr. Group, can you answer Councilman's question, please?
Well, the way I understand what Mr. Smith said, and I agree with it, I asked the question originally, was that to require a four-fish vote at this point in time, when one is not required by the city charter, not required by the city code, what could be deemed to interfere with the reasonable expectation of the spending, expenditure for the money?
Correct.
And therefore defeat one of the requirements of obtaining this financing.
Correct. What, when you sign the tax certificate at the closing, you have to make various reps, and one would be that you are going to spend at least eighty-five percent of the, that would be the value of the not-to-exceed amount of the drawdown within three years. And so, and you also make other reps that you're going to proceed with due diligence to enter into contracts to spend that money, and so, and the reason is, and they call it a hedge bond, because the IRS frowns upon issuing debt before you need it, or that you don't even know that you need, so that's why we have those reps, and why we have an anticipated drawdown schedule. So you have to have some type of, you know, guidelines when you issue the debt. What I was referring to earlier is, let's say you gave an example that you're not sure how much one project's going to cost, it may be double what you think, and that may boot another one out, that's fine, you can rearrange the projects that way.
Right. I understand that, my concern is that, we have a, that, currently, we have a momentum that runs, it has nothing to do with loans, and I, I'm not comfortable with the momentum that some of these projects are taking on their own. And again, when we talked about these a while ago, it was, when we bought the community center, for one, it wasn't, oh, we're going to keep running with it, and when we see one point five million tag associated with it, funding here, I'll say, gives the tacit implication, and I've said that word multiple times, is, gives a tacit, that tacitly implies that we're approving it and moving forward with these things, and I'm seeing that happen.
Sure, and I understand what you're saying, and that is unrelated to the debt issue, I think. It's policy decisions, yes.
And that's, I don't know where it says, I'm looking at the, Lonnie, what you had emailed from George to me, and I don't, I just don't read it to say anything except, to say that there's not an exception to the IRS hedge bond rules and regulations for drawdown loans. We'll have to make certifications of closing that expect to spend all the unauthorized proceeds, as it have to do, and expect or draw on a spending schedule is also required.
Right. And we have-
I don't see an answer either way, to be perfectly honest with you, so that's why I was-
Well, maybe, and that may be because what George was looking into, Misty, correct me, was whether or not, I think it was, would be clear if this was a bond, that you could not impose a four-fish requirement to, that could interfere with your certification-
To spending the money, yes.
And it's clear that you couldn't do that in a bond situation. What George was looking into was, was there any difference in a bank drawdown?
Because it was a drawdown.
And the answer was no.
Correct.
So, really, that's, that's, that answer really was clearer than maybe it was, it was shown in the emails and-
In other words, I guess inferred from him saying there is no exception, because it is a drawdown.
That's the same as a bond. I didn't read that, I-
I'm sorry.
No, I understand now, that the question was, is it treated similarly, the same as the bond, his answer was yes.
Yes, absolutely.
And I understand.
Okay, okay.
Anything else, Councilman?
No, like I said, I'm just uncomfortable approving all of this. I would have rather, as I've said, I, my options were either approve parts of it, you know, it wasn't used, it's, I understand, it's a great rate, there are great rates out there all the time for things, that doesn't mean you have to take it. I think we have to be very prudent, and if we do do this, then we have to be very, very prudent, and I think the councilman said, walk slowly and make sure, step by step, but I see us keep moving at this fast pace, so. I'm uncomfortable with that.
Does Councilman Henke? Let me just go up and down first. Did you have something?
Yeah, I'm just curious about the email you're talking about with Mr. Group, did we get a copy of that? Were we CC'd on that?
I don't think you were, actually.
Now, I have more questions than I have answers, but we'll get to that.
Couple of things, I actually had the same thought, and you guys answered that, we can't, we will not see this come back, Center Lake Park, Fire Station, Lights, Field, individually approved. We approve this, it's there, and we have to do it, although we could change it around to other things, and flexible, but we, the expenditures we make do not come back to us and get approved? Is that what you're saying? Or they will come back to us? Okay, so the expenditures, okay, that's where I was losing, Councilman.
There will be a resolution, like, give an example, Center Lake Park.
It's coming into five things down the line for Musco Lights.
Center Lake Park, if we, we will bring you a resolution authorizing the expenditure of the one point two five million dollars from the draw.
Or any variable of.
Or any variable of that. And so, that will be brought to you. I think what Ms. Taylor was talking about, the actual physical-
That's where I was losing you. So each one of these projects will come back to this body for approval of the expenditure.
Can I say it maybe another way? The drawdowns, although the drawdowns are accomplished by the city manager, your procurement policies, your procurement practices for the procurement of goods and services and land, and approval of projects, hasn't changed, so all that continues the same.
And I'm just playing devil's advocate here for a minute, so, for instance, if something of this list came back to this body, and, I don't need a supermajority, but let's say it failed, are we having a problem? Because I think you said the money has to be spent. Let's say one of these issues came back and it didn't pass, are we going to have a problem with the bond and the way we got it? And that's, no?
What's the penalty for not drawing down?
For not drawing it down?
Well, that, your financial advisor and the finance team negotiated no fee for not drawing, so that's good. So you don't have to- Yeah, so, but what the tax certificate will say is that you expect to reasonably spend eighty-five percent within three years, so.
Reasonably comes into play.
There you go. But, but the bond documents themselves don't require additional approval, just to be clear, but obviously, you have internal procedures that require that, you know, the council give guidance to your staff on how and when the money is spent, so. And, what was the other question?
I think that was really-
Okay, yeah, and no fee on any undrawn monies, okay, all right.
For the record, Mark Galvin for Southwest Company. At the end of the two-year period, let's say that you found out that you've only spent three million or three million nine. Now, then what we can, at that point, what we do is saying, all right, let's go into a fix. We either going to refinance at that point and lock it in, or we're going to go ahead and stick with the current TD Bank option, and just amortize three million dollars. So it's not like you've got to spend three, three point nine million, it's that all you're doing is identified projects that you expect to go, you know, you're going to make the decisions on whether or not the funds are spent, or like you said, through your procurement process. It's just a vehicle that allows you the ability to be able to take advantage of this, and not have to do a separate, every time that you do a project, you're not asking me to go out and go find financing for you, and also have to pay additional cost of issuance associated with each time you-
In basically fifteen years, about two point four percent.
Well, keep in mind, that is the, based upon current rates.
Right.
One of the benefits of this particular financing is that TD was willing to lock in an index. So they lock in today's spread, which are, is an aggressive spread, so at least the point where, two years from now, one thing that we will do is that we will look at, is there a better alternative for you? And if there's a better rate, then, but we've got something to compare it to. We've got it compared against this index, if the index is better, we go with them, if not, we go in a different direction. We could go longer, or combine it with another type of financing. This provides you the flexibility to be able to finance this at the most cost-effective way.
You have a question? I need to respond, I didn't answer. If you can't agree on how to spend the money, if you can't get, and you don't need the supermajority, but let's say you just, you can't pass something, that's how the reshuffling of the projects would come in. You would find something that you would all agree to spend the money on or not, and there is no fee for not, so.
I just got to ask another into-the-future question. You guys are good. Mr. Cobb, and I don't know that you can answer this, maybe Jerry could, but we take this for the next, so let's say, two years. Our current millage rate can support this debt?
This goes under GOB, that was my question.
Yeah, it's not secured by, you know, your actual tax, it's a special specific right, you get your utility tax-
Okay. Okay, so this is coming from, from different sources, not-
This debt goes under GOB, though, right?
No.
It does not.
It's coming from the other, other things, okay, I got it. I just wanted to be clear. Good.
Good. Councilman Braden?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm clear, just, this debt comes out, the payment of this debt comes out of the general fund and the general military?
Utility tax.
Utility taxes, okay, so it's paid for from an independent revenue source, so it has no impact on our military, or general obligation. No, right, Jerry?
Okay. Boy. Can I get one of these? To do my question?
Well, I, just briefly, and we'll wrap this up and call the vote, I think that this is Jerry and you guys from First Southwest, and Tindal Oliver, and everybody did a great job of putting together a very creative way of utilizing the borrowing power of the city and locking in an exceptional rate. I mean, that, that spread that TD gave us, as compared to the others, was exceptional. These are all projects that we're working on, our tax revenue is growing because of the need for these projects, so we are going to see growth in the city, see revenues increase, and, as was just stated, none of this repayment is tied to general fund money anyway. It's all tied to fees and utility tax, so. I think you all did a great job, and I want to thank you for all your hard work, and all the time that it took to explain it to each and every one of us, down to the details, whether, you know, we agree with it or not, you know, it, we need the information. And, you know, the concerns that were raised are valid, you know, this is, we're casting a wide net, and as we go forth, as you said and stated, you know, we'll go through our regular procurement process, and, you know, whatever we decide on as a body, and as a council, and as a community, is what we'll expend dollars on. If we don't expend it, there's no fee or penalty, so. I think that's great.
And I was mistaken, I, again, I didn't know it was utility tax, I either missed that part, sorry, Jerry. You guys did do a great job, I probably wasn't listening at that point, but I had said before that it was coming out of general fund, and it's coming out of utility tax, so I apologize for that.
You and I do that sometimes.
Every once in a while, we're talking too much and not listening, so I apologize.
All righty. Anything else from anybody? All righty, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt, signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose.
I said aye.
You said aye.
It's utility tax.
Okay. Unanimous.
You did a great job.
All righty, thank you, everyone.
Good job, guys.
All righty, next item, let's just jump over to Musco Lighting real quick, number seventeen.
Let's just jump over to Musco Lighting real quick, number 17, Resolution 2692-13. Brian, give us a brief introduction, then we'll go to Southern Design.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let's get the Musco guy out of here.
This is a request for City Council to approve a work order with Musco Sports Lighting LLC and authorize a draw of $415,000 against the bank line of credit approved under Resolution 2690-13 to complete the sports lighting project at the Oviedo Sports Complex. To just give you a little bit of a history, we, the city received a grant from the state for $250,000 for us to retrofit the lighting for fields 1, 2, and 4. At the sports complex, this, this request will retrofit the remaining eight fields at a cost not to exceed $415,000. We are able to do this through Musco's contract with Clay County, which was provided for you with your packet. And tonight, it is recommended that you adopt the Resolution Number 2692-13.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. I have no request to speak forms on this item, so I'll move right into the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Deputy Mayor?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 2692-13.
Second. We have motion and a second. Any discussion on the lights?
Much needed and.
Saves a lot of money over time.
I think we beat the heck out of the lights two or three weeks ago. Councilman missed that one.
I missed it, yeah, but I talked to Drew on the phone.
All those spillover issues?
Mm-hmm.
Going to be addressed.
That's right. They waited a long time for that.
All righty. Hearing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, pose, motion carries. All right.
That was the quickest Drew went through something ever.
Hey, you're giving us free lights, right?
For 25 years, actually.
All righty, let's go backwards, item number 16. Resolution Number 2671-13. Mr. Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for City Council to approve a preliminary subdivision plan for a 43-lot, single-family residential development. The proposed subdivision is located on the north and the south side of State Route 434, approximately 620 feet east of Calypso Way and on the, on the south side of 434, and at the intersection of 434 and Deleon Street on the north side. Basically, it's in the Big Curve, which on the north and the south side of the Big Curve. The total land area of the project is 22.28 acres. 21 lots will be located on the south side of State Route 434. 22 lots will be located on the north side. The proposed 22 lots on the north side are adjacent to a proposed Winter Springs 52-lot subdivision, which will share infrastructure with the Oviedo portion. The retention pond will be located in the Winter Springs side of the subdivision. The streets will be private and the development will be gated. Lots 21, 22, 41, 42, and 43 are designated as temporary sales office slash trailer and model homes. What the significance of that is, is that it will not require special exception use orders at a later date, since we are taking care of it with the preliminary subdivision plan. The applicant does request one deviation. It is a deviation to Land Development Code Section 17.1A, which deals with the provision of recreational acreage. It is a 2,730 square foot deviation, 18.4%, to the requirement that the 43-lot subdivision have a mini park with an area of 15,050 square feet. This is to allow the 43-lot subdivision to have a mini park with an area of 12,320 square feet. Now, as part of the mitigation for this deviation, the applicant has agreed to place shade structures over the play equipment and sitting areas within the tot lot that is provided on Track G. And Track G is provided on the south side of State Route 434. The preliminary subdivision plan has been reviewed per the city's concurrency requirements, and all concurrency requirements have been satisfied. The Development Review Committee considered this site development order and preliminary subdivision plan at a, at a meeting on June 20th, 2013, and recommended approval with the addition of two conditions to the site development order. And the conditions were that the applicant shall include a traffic preemption system for public safety. That condition has already been incorporated into the site development order. And then the second condition was that the applicant will include the shade structures over the play structures and sitting areas on the tot lot on Track G. That condition has also been added to the site development order. The Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board considered the preliminary subdivision plan on July the 9th, 2013, and recommended approval, subject to the addition of two conditions to the site development order, and a condition for a change of language on the plans regarding the preservation of trees. The PZA added condition number 12, stating that a six-foot PVC fence shall be installed on the southern boundary of lots 13 through 17 prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. This language has been incorporated into the site development order. The second condition was that the applicant shall remove all language stating all trees to be removed from the tree replacement plans on, in, within the preliminary subdivision plan. And the applicant has also removed the subject language. The third condition from the PZA was that language be added to the site development order, that staff to determine that any heritage trees that could be retained from an overlay provided by the applicant at the time of final engineering. This condition has also been added to the site development order. The subdivision is consistent with the property's future land use designation and zoning designation. Therefore, it is recommended that City Council adopt Resolution Number 2671-13.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. The applicant is present. Would you like to make a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Dwight Sadoff, and I'm at 7575 Dr. Phillips Boulevard in Orlando, 32819. My presentation won't go more than an hour. I know it's getting kind of late.
You're paying them, not us.
Actually, I've got three of my project consultants here, and I was kidding with the mayor about during the break that, as you can see, from their advanced age, they probably bill me a lot per hour, so I won't take a lot of time to talk because every minute's costing me a fortune. But no, I, I am prepared to answer any questions that you have. I wanted to make sure I brought everybody involved in putting the plan together and putting documentation together that went into support of the plan. We naturally concur with the, both the DRC recommendation of approval, as well as the PZA unanimous recommendation of approval. In getting ready for the hearing today, I, I noted, just sort of interestingly, I guess, to me, that this is our ninth public hearing or public meeting on this project in Oviedo, and I know we're going to have at least seven in Winter Springs. Our first time that we came to you on anything having to do with this project was back in September. We actually, up 12, we actually had started our assemblage on the land back in about March of 12. So it's a, it's a fairly lengthy process. We had four different rounds of review comments by your staff on our PSP, which is what's here tonight. I think three times we paid your review fee of 7,000 or 8,000 bucks, so this, this, there's a lot goes into this, I guess is what I like to tell you.
After what you're doing, paying off the loan for the lights, thank you.
That's true.
Councilman Shanks says, thank you.
You could have included me as a revenue source in your bond issue. But in any event, I, I know you may have questions. You know, these plans have a lot that goes into them, I could tell from your prior hearing. But we're prepared to answer questions, and if anybody speaks in opposition, I'd like a chance to address their comments if possible.
Thank you. All righty. I will open this up for public comment. Again, usually on resolutions, folks, we do require a written request upfront. I see some folks are here to speak. We will open it up, and as I told the residents from the sanctuary, if we can just keep it brief and to the point, we'd greatly appreciate it. Is there anybody who would like to address counsel on this item? No? Look at that. See, we're not Winter Springs, we're not annexing other land, so. Nothing? All righty. Close public comment. Move on to the pleasure of council.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Shank?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2671-13?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman Shank, you are the first. It is a complex issue. I wish you could decomplex it for yourselves and for everybody involved. It's a, it's a, got the complications of a, you know, 20-square-mile subdivision that encompasses three different, you know, government agencies and, you know, if you can get yourself out of that, I know it would be, I know it would help you cost-wise. So that would be my one thing, is try everything you can to whittle it down, because it, the, I don't know, it is so small that those large-scale things that work in a large-scale, different jurisdictions behind the gate, just, I don't know that, it's, it sounds bothersome, but I don't know how bothersome it really is in the long run and what goes on, but it's just one of those, there's an, there's an ease if it is all under one jurisdiction, so that's it. Okay, Councilman. Councilwoman?
I have one question for you. I read in there that you were putting a six-foot PVC fence behind lot 13 to 17. Why do you stop at 17 when you have 18 and 19?
Those happen to be, this came up at the P&amp;Z. One of the members there had suggested it, and I thought it wasn't a bad idea. Those just happen to be the only lots that actually abut lots. Everything else either abuts wetland or butts, abuts a pond.
Oh, is that a wetland there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or drainage pond.
Okay. All right, that's the only question I had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilman Britton?
I don't really have any questions. I was given, I'll disclose now, I was given a briefing by Mr. Sadoff. Couple of weeks ago, I think it was on the 22nd of July, and was given a, an overview of this project, so I have no questions.
Deputy Mayor?
I'm good for now, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I met with Mr. Sadoff on this as well, and I, I, I just have a major problem with this, you know, as we discussed. I, I just cannot, for the life of me, see how this is going to work on the north side. I have no problem approving the south side this evening. The south side of 434 on the City of Oviedo side, I have no issue with. That north side, you're, you're, I, I understand the constraints you're against, but I, I cannot support this. And, you know, I'd ask the council to seriously consider what, what you would be approving here. You're going to be entering in through the City of Oviedo, going down a street that's going to have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 residents facing the street who are going to be Winter Springs residents. They're going to get different police protection. They're going to get different garbage pickup. They're going to have different water rates. We're going to have their water lines and sewer lines and our easements. Then you're going to travel through the neighborhood and to the back of the neighborhood. It's going to be all Winter Springs. You're going to have different election cycles. You're going to have two different sets of municipal governments servicing this one area. Whether it's gated or not, it's just going to be total confusion for these residents. I mean, it, it just, it isn't going to work. And you can, you can sit down on paper and say it's going to work. You can sit down on paper and say it's happened elsewhere. That's elsewhere. I, I'm, I'm just not comfortable with it and in its current configuration, Dwight. I can't support it, of course.
Well, Mayor, obviously, I respectfully disagree. We have, as I mentioned, prior to our nine public meetings here, and your DRC, your staff looks at all these various issues. Raised issues about intergovernmental coordination. We've, for instance, one of the things we did was make the community private at the request of both cities so that there wasn't, you know, two sets of public streets. We've been around, this has not been a new thing. I mean, if anybody had wanted us to go into one city, I, our annexation into the south part of our property, to this moment, is still contingent on you approving our PSP. So if you don't want to approve our PSP, it won't be annexed into Oviedo, and I'll have to annex the whole thing into Winter Springs. I mean, I'll, I have to. I have to do this deal. I bought the land. This is such a late hour to raise that issue, I'm really kind of surprised, to be honest. The DRC and the P&amp;Z so far in Winter Springs, I know you mentioned with me you had a concern with police. You didn't mention fire, because that's, that's first response, same with emergency service. Our utility lines for Oviedo are serviced by the Oviedo Utilities. The utilities lines and service for the Winter Springs portion of the project is serviced by Winter Springs. You know, so what, that my neighbor gets his trash picked up on Tuesday and I get my trash picked up on Wednesday? That happens in my neighborhood. I live in the Bay Hill area of Orange County, right outside my gate. They got, they, they're, they got their trash out on one day and I have my own other. Who cares? Who cares? I mean, that's, that's, that's really, really not a big deal to me. The police chief for Winter Springs, I know you had a concern with people living in Winter Springs calling the police. Well, he sits on their DRC and has reviewed the plans, and their staff hasn't raised the issue you've raised. So I'm not sure who finds it to be a problem. I know you, you seem to think it's a problem. They don't want to de-annex their portion of the subdivision. You don't want to de-annex your portion of the subdivision. And I, and I dealt with this for many months leading up to when we actually made our application. I even have correspondence with your staff in the, when I submitted my PSP. The first round of comments you get from the staff is called a sufficiency review. And one of the questions, number two, was the PSP involves three jurisdictions. At the time, we had Seminole County property. There's a need for close coordination between the three jurisdictions for approval of the PSP, blah, blah, blah. My answer, we have had numerous previous meetings with the city managers, planning directors and staff, and public works directors for both cities, and believe that all the parties are working together in good faith effectively. All I've ever asked in this thing was that the two cities just try to work together, because it's a unique piece of property. Unique in the sense that it's one project with one name, with two jurisdictions covered underneath it. But otherwise, I've got to think you and other cities have got boundaries of properties and projects and roads that abut boundaries and projects and roads from another city or a county. I know that happens all over where I live in Orange County and City of Orlando and other cities. So I don't, I don't think it's that big a deal, but obviously, you're entitled to your opinion, Mayor. Hopefully, we can get through the process and get our PSP approved. The standard of review for a PSP, legally speaking, is the competent substantial evidence. What have we presented? What's been presented here tonight? What evidence has been presented that I comply with the code? The evidence that I comply with the code is that your staff is saying that I comply with the code. I comply with the comp plan. I comply with the zoning. And I've got the recommend, their recommendation, the recommendation of P&amp;Z. That's the substantial competent evidence that's of record for the item before you. So that's the reality of it.
Well, let me give you the reality of it. The reality of it is that you're asking us for deviations. We do not have to grant you one deviation. The reality of it is that I have brought up these same objections to you each and every time, and they've been, whether ignored or not, I don't know. The reality of it is my staff can tell you, you can paint every darn building pink in this subdivision until we approve it, they're brown. That's the reality of it. So if you want to get into a pissing match with me, it's no problem. I'll sit here and piss all night long.
Mayor, I didn't, the first time I've ever heard this brought up by anybody was when you mentioned it to me at our meeting a couple of weeks ago. I've never heard you make this comment in any of our other hearings here. So I just want to make that clear, because I don't ignore comments.
All right, that, that's.
I'm just telling you, I, you've got, you've got enough points. I just have to address your points. I'm trying to, I can, I can either not address your, your point, or I can try to address the point, but that.
You can annex the south side all you want to the City of Winter Springs. You're right, go right ahead, but we still control that 20-acre that you've got to get through to get over to the other parcel that's behind, Dwight. There's got to be a better way to get back.
I can't get to it. I have no other way to get to it. DOT will not approve a direct access. That, that, my access, my access choices on the north parcel are Deleon Road or 434. My, other than the wetlands, which, which, which are adjacent to 434 in Winter Springs, I've got Oviedo property and I've got a little sliver of Winter Springs property. DOT is not going to approve that access in that location. They don't want a lot of access points directly into 434. I don't have a choice of where I come into the subdivision. I don't have other access to that, that part of my project.
And, and I understand that, but. No, you can't. Sit down. You had your chance. I asked everybody. You know, the, the, pardon? Don't worry. We'll get to you then. You know, the issue becomes, Dwight, is that we have two jurisdictions on the same street, the same street. I, I just cannot possibly see how this is gonna work. You know, I just see a nightmare after a nightmare after a nightmare for us. That, that's my only thing, you know, the rest of the council may not agree with me, I don't. At least, I'm one vote of five. I'm just giving you my opinion.
I, I agree, and I have to give you a response. I'm, hopefully, I wasn't disrespectful, I just tried to state the facts.
I don't think you were, I just...
I agree with most, I agree with most things you said, so...
Late at night, and I'll piss right back at ya.
No problem.
And your name is? Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
Robby's Like, it's thirty-nine eleven Orange Lake Drive, Orlando, Florida, three-two-eight-one-seven. I've been in this process together for about nineteen months with my partner Dwight, and I have been so impressed with the city of Oviedo and the city of Winter Springs, and I thought it was a incredibly unique and fantastic example of two cities communicate, cooperating, coordinating, communicating with each other. My cousin lives in Hollywood, Florida, and right across the street, the person lives in Miami. And maybe somewhere along the line, that was a fantastic opportunity where two, two city mayors and two city managers got together and made something happen. I happen to know that due to the uniqueness of this property and the long time it's taken, that these are gonna be high-value, high-dollar houses brought into the area which should be less, less reliance on police, fire, and everything, and be more of an asset to the city, to the school system, you know, more parental involvement, and on and on. And I just think that I would appreciate it if you all could take that into account, that it's, it goes a long way towards saying about Winter Springs and Oviedo getting along, and I've been living in central Florida now since nineteen seventy-three, and, okay. And some of you folks may have known, I, I used to have a video chain called Sixteen Thousand Movies, so I had a reputation, and my dad had Freddy's Steakhouse for like thirty-three years, so we've been around central Florida and try to do it right, and can be counted on.
And I understand that, but you, you do understand that the front twenty homes are gonna get garbage pickup once a week, the back fifty homes, the waste pro truck is gonna drive past the front twenty homes, go to the back lot, start picking garbage up at lot, well, I can't tell the numbers here, it'll, I guess it's forty-three, forty-five, forty-four, forty-five, fifty, that whole back strip. They're gonna, they're, those folks are gonna put their garbage out twice a week. The people up in the front are gonna put their garbage out once a week. The people in the back are gonna pay one rate for water and sewer, the people in the front are gonna pay a different rate for water and sewer, and their next-door neighbors.
Well, you know, isn't this America, and don't we have the pleasure of making our own choices? Like, I never ask my neighbor what he spends a month for electricity, or what he pays. I mean, the beauty of life is, so I get the pleasure of living in a subdivision where I'm an Oviedo citizen, and the other person gets the pleasure of life being a Winter Garden, a Winter Springs citizen.
But you're putting them in the same neighborhood, you're creating this problem, not us.
And you guys accepted a review fee three times, and went through this whole process nineteen months, and worked together in communication and coordination with two cities so that you could get...
All the way up to, this is the first time we're seeing the PSP. This is the first time this is in front of us.
And you, you feel that I wouldn't be happy living across the street from a person who gets their garbage on Wednesday? I don't even know what day I get my garbage, and why would I care what day my neighbor gets my garbage? If I have an opportunity to live in Oviedo in a six-hundred-thousand-dollar house or something, you know, I don't understand how that hurts life, and it's not the first time it's been done. Maybe it's the first time between Oviedo and Winter Springs that they've worked together, but, you know, I mean, one thing about America is Americans do incredible things, and they have an opportunity to live in a great place and make productive, best use of the property, and I, the other side didn't have a problem. Okay, well, anyway, is there anything we can do that would mitigate this for the people? I mean, it's all about the happiness of the people.
Find another access point for your back acreage, that's what you can, to make me happy, if you're asking.
They wanted no commercial, and a commercial was given, and this was given, and that was given.
Who wanted no commercial?
Well, every time you go to a municipality, you know, you get extracted more in different, and different, and different to make everybody happy. We've been making people happy for nineteen months, and we even bought land from the city of Oviedo for this make-to-make productive use of an abandoned property. So, anyway, I'm just pleading with you to consider that a lot of people, the folks that will live here will be happy, they're living in big houses, and if it's just a matter of that one person is paying twenty-eight dollars for water and sewer service, another one's paying thirty-three dollars, and one person is paying, getting their garbage on Monday, and another one's getting it on Wednesday, it's hard to get to live in Oviedo or Winter Springs.
You know all the answers.
Not really, I'm pleading, actually.
You're pretending to. Lot thirty-three dial, now, come on up here, come on back, come on. Lot, lot, lot thirty-three dials nine-one-one.
Yes, sir.
What happens?
Well, the city of Winter Garden Police Chief, Winter Springs Police Chief, was sitting in the DRC, and he went over it, and it happens...
My DRC or his DRC?
His DRC.
Okay.
No, you, you, you can win, you can beat me into the ground if you want to, but the truth of the matter is, is that the, like, you have the early responders for the fire, okay? My cousin lives in Hollywood, and right across the street is Miami. If he calls the police, the police come. If the other person calls the police, the police come. I can imagine, it's just the same thing. The beauty of this subdivision is you have less reliance on police, fire, water, and sewer, because supposedly, city managers tell me that your higher-income houses take up more space in land than bigger lots like these are, and just have less problems and pay higher taxes. So, maybe this is the best use of the property out there, and it was work together in coordination with two municipalities, which is a beautiful thing, given Oviedo and Winter Springs, you know, somewhat.
Have you annexed a land in? Have you annexed that land in from Winter Springs yet?
Which land?
That, the pond, is that in?
It's in the process.
So, it's not done yet?
No, it's not done yet.
So, we really don't have to approve anything tonight, we can wait until that's all done and see what happens.
Why would you do that?
Because what happens if they don't let you annex that land in?
Well, they've already, the county's already written a letter to this, excuse me, has already written a letter to the city of Winter Spring saying that they support the annexation. And the city of Winter Springs has got on their agenda to, to, to process the annexation.
Has the county approved the use of the land yet?
The county doesn't have to approve the use of the land. We're living with the code, we're living with the Seminole County comp plan designation on the property. Mayor, what does that have to do with the police? What does that have to do with the garbage on the one side of the street coming one day and coming another, down another?
Because you don't get that parcel.
What's that?
If you don't get that parcel...
What do I get? What do I lose? If I don't get that parcel? I'm, I've got three million dollars invested in the land, and several hundred thousand dollars in planning fees, and you think I'm just doing this just hoping that I can get some retention upon?
We'll call the vote, we'll see what goes.
All right, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Can I ask about chief police a couple of questions, if you don't mind?
Then we're gonna go to Mr. Cobb, 'cause he looks like he's got something. No?
Chief?
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
Just from a, I mean, there's, there's a lot of issues to this, but just from a, from a public safety point, and, and Chief White, if you can just listen to this, too, is there, is there any problem? I mean, sometimes you get, you get communities that have, it's rare. I mean, when I first looked at this, I was like, I've never seen anything like that in eight years I've been up here, but if somebody calls nine-one-one and has an issue, are you guys gonna be crossed up, or, Chief White, are you gonna be crossed up going in there and responding? Somebody calls nine-one-one, the question was asked, gentleman said the police and fire will come, how are you guys gonna work that with Winter Springs to send the right person or the county as far as the fire department would have to respond?
If the nine-one-one call comes from a cellphone, all nine-one-one calls from cellphones go to Seminole County.
Right.
They then look at the address, and either would transfer it to Winter Springs Police Department, or to the dispatch area for Oviedo. If it's a landline, it's set up to go to, by the caller ID, what city it, it goes to.
So, basically, from a public safety point, it's going to the county, the county's looking at the address, they're gonna send the appropriate, appropriate person in there, so it'd be quite possible that somebody on the Oviedo side could call, but yet get a Winter Springs cop.
If it's landline, the possibility is less than if it's a cellphone.
Okay. But, but you could be responding to Winter Springs residents if somebody calls on their cellphone?
It's possible.
And the fire, the same, same thing? Chief White, would you agree?
Well, it's all first response.
Right.
Our, our step, our, our locals agree that closest unit.
Closest unit.
I would be likely even with our relocation, probably still would be the patient response. The alley address that the chief's talking about, the landline, would show jurisdictional response.
Okay. So, those residents in there, they get, they get, they're not gonna have any, like, downtime? They're gonna get their equal response time, whatever you guys have, even though it's Winter Springs on one side of the street and us on the other?
There's a high probability that would happen. There's always a possibility something gets screwed up, even now.
The mayor is trying to bring up some points that I'm, I'm grasping here, because I can see an issue. If a cellphone person calls you and you respond to the Winter Springs home, now the Oviedo police are there, now, but you're in Winter Springs, stuff goes to court, you're in, it gets all convoluted. Do you, do you see this as an issue, too? I'm trying to get to the public safety aspect first. Do you see this as an issue? You respond, guy's in his driveway, he lives in Oviedo, and he lives in the Winter Springs side, he calls you on his cellphone, you guys respond, there's some horrific crime there, you're involved with a Winter Springs resident, their police aren't even involved. Does that cause problems legally for investigations, or, or court cases, or, or things like that? That's what he's trying to get at, and I'm trying to wrap my hands around.
And the answer to this is possible. If it's a felony, we have mutual aid agreements with everybody in, in Seminole County. It does muddy the water sometimes, but if, as far as nine-one-one, it's a cellphone, everything goes to Seminole County regardless.
Right.
And then they sort out what the jurisdiction is.
Got you.
Like Chief White said, a hard, a hard-line phone would show the jurisdiction. But it can, depending on the situation, the wrong person, or, or Winter Springs could respond, and if that would be the case...
Right.
If it's not an emergency...
Right.
Once that jurisdiction was found, they would call the other jurisdiction. If it's an emergency, we would handle the emergency and sort that out later.
I got you. Okay, chief, thank you.
That'd be the same as Seminole, Seminole County, I back Seminole County, and if I, and I've called, and sometimes they're, they keep flipping me back and forth, so Seminole County walks up to my door, it's the same thing, is that happening, right? I mean, it can happen all over, anywhere that's...
Right, that happens right now, not on Queen and Denise, so over on Johnson Hill area is actual Seminole County, we're probably there more than there.
Does that cause any problems? I mean, as far as safety for people, as far as the safety for our residents?
At the outset, probably not, because the officer's gonna deal with what's there. We're not gonna stop and say, oh, this is jurisdiction.
And if it's a felony, a serious crime, it doesn't matter who's there, we will be there.
We would deal with the, right, we would deal with the situation, correct.
So, if you're having a, someone calls and says, oh, I, someone burglarized my home or something like that, you get there, and you find out it's Winter Springs, you just call Winter Springs in, and they take it from there?
That's correct.
Okay.
But our officers up there, wasting his time...
It, it, it does, you have borders.
Even if it's Winter Springs at that moment.
Right.
It, it's just that it's the same street.
I, I don't disagree with you, like I said, I, I understand what you're saying. I look at it, it's a bit odd, if it was a large scale, as the gentleman said, Hollywood and some, large-scale areas, it's done all the time, we have, you cross boundaries, you see things that are laid out in multiple jurisdictions. You know, in our town, it's the equivalent of, yes, it's similar to, Twin Rivers runs along Lockwood on multiple sides, so, yes, it's the same jurisdiction, so the layout-wise, it's the same. Like I said, do I love it? Eh, I wish it was better, I really do, but it's there, it works, it's worked in large scale, it can work in small scale, I'm sure, it'll be fine, that's all I feel.
Okay, chief, I got one question, Mayor, and I'll turn it right back, not for you, chief, for Mr. Sathoff.
Okay.
Can you come up, Dwight, for a minute, please? Question I have for you, the, the smaller piece of property, you said you couldn't get access from the DOT. Can you explain why they didn't give you access, what the issue was there?
Yeah, you wanna talk about that?
Certainly, more in engineering.
Okay.
My, my name's Bill Fogel with Civil Design Group, eighty-nine sixty-nine Charles Olympus Road. We have the, the intersection that you're talking about to get another driveway in off of four thirty-four, would bisect the, the Leon Street. I don't know if there's a graph, but the, we have an entrance to our south, south, and then we have the entrance to the, to Leon Street.
Right.
And to bring one just in to service those Winter Spring lots, would, would go right between, halfway between those.
Right.
The first thing I did was meet with DOT when we got involved with this project, and say, no way in the world they're gonna give us an entrance there, given the location of the, spacing of the two on four thirty-four.
Right.
It's another dangerous situation, just not gonna do it, if there's any alternate access possible. We did ask early on that, you know, would, we begged you guys to de-annex one, one or the other, so we didn't run into these problems. But, of course, you, you can't do that, and city can't do that, so...
Right.
We've done the best job we can here, you know, I could potentially punch a driveway through the wetland, but that's something nobody wants.
Where's the wetland to the west?
Well, who doesn't want it?
Every environmentalist out there, including me.
Well, you got, you got a...
Water Management District.
You got Beacon Street right-of-way, right? On the Winter Springs property, I'm looking right at it.
It's a thirty-foot half right-of-way.
It's private.
It's used as a ditch for DOT.
You know, you got a little bit of uplands there, that you could line up with what you got across the street from us.
Again, it gets into wetland impacts.
Mitigation.
First, first off, Mayor, the cost to mitigate one acre of wetland in this area, four-hundred-thousand dollars. I got environmentalists, we don't develop where we try to impact wetlands. We have seven subdivisions, that's a big no-no for us, unless it's just impossible to avoid. So, that's the big thing, but Mayor, think about this, when you get into the, into this property, whether you came in from where we've got it here or anywhere else, you've got two cities that abut, you're going to have shared roads. No matter where I come into this, we're gonna have shared roads. So, I mean, you, you are, one way or the other, we're gonna have shared roads.
Barrington Estates next door doesn't share any road with any of the subdivisions that are across the street in the city of Oviedo.
No, I know, but, well, first of all, they do, they share four thirty-four. You've got a major road with Winter Springs right here on one side, and Oviedo on the other. They share a road.
Correct, a clear delineation.
They share a road.
Four thirty-four.
We're gonna share a road, we're gonna share a road. Do you think when people bought in Barrington Estates, they got all worried that the trash over in Oviedo on the other side of the road came on a different day? Or that the guy on the, lived a hundred yards away on the cross four thirty-four, paid a little different utility? I just don't think they did.
But it's two different neighborhoods, this is the same neighborhood.
Yeah, again, it's, it's, the, the, the southern road doesn't work, 'cause DOT doesn't want it, 'cause that would offset from our, our southern intersection, and then we get into a major wetland problem with Water Management District probably.
You can see, that is a major wetland. I mean, I don't know if you're seeing the site plan we have here, but it's...
No, I'm looking.
I mean, I don't know if you're seeing the site plan we have here, but it's a major wetland.
I see it.
So, if I go in, if it was, if it was to my economic advantage to have designed a subdivision to blow out a major wetland, imagine the uproar. Don would've had all of his buddies here, they all would've been going, my God, and developers trying to make millions off of the wetlands and the critters. I mean, they would've, you know, you know I'm right, he would be here with ten people.
I'll give you that.
Okay.
Ten, he'd have twenty here.
And, and again, it's, you know, joint, joint, there's many, many projects I've worked on for a single road that's been in Seminole County, then to Oviedo, then into Winter Springs, then into City of Orlando, Orange County, all on the same, same road, so, you know.
Okay.
I really don't see the-
No worries. Any other questions from anyone?
No.
Mayor, can I make one, just something I mentioned to you. If the city of Winter Springs and the city of Oviedo want me as a proprietor, if they need me to come in and apply to de-annex from one or the other, I'll do it. If both of them come to me and say, Dwight, this really, we have bigger fish to fry, we really would rather have your Southern Oaks project be in one city, I will, I will sign the application. I'll say it right here on the public record. If, if not, you're putting me in a position where I can't even use half of my property and I, and I've got to get this done or I'll go broke. I've got to get this finally through this process and we try to comply with everybody's requirements. I met, I've met with Don several times, I've sent him my PSP every draft, I met with the president of every HOA around there, I haven't had one party yet come to my hearings and object. Even Don in the Winter Springs hearings, because he only came to, this is the first time he's been before you. In my Winter Springs hearings, he's on the record as saying, I don't, I don't oppose the project. He's always had a big concern about the road, Deleone, and, and the use of Deleone at four thirty-four. I share that concern, I paid forty-five hundred dollars on my nickel without anybody requiring that I do it, only a request to do a traffic warrants signal study for four thirty-four. I've had Don come and meet with my traffic engineer, spent the money, let's go. I got the technical expertise and some money, you've got the people and the history, whatever you want. I mean, we have really tried to work with everybody on this.
Anything else?
Can I just confirm one thing? This piece of property here is also entering from four thirty-four?
No, Deleone.
Oh, from Deleone, okay.
That, that's in our city already.
Right, right, this curve is, I got you, okay.
And that twenty acres is already in the city of Oviedo?
Right.
That is being brought into the city of Oviedo.
Right, I just wanted to make sure.
Alrighty. Anything else from council?
Nope.
Mr. Cobb, you have anything to add to this conversation? I'm really a little surprised that it's gotten this far through staff, but that's just my surprise. I know it's been very convoluted from the beginning.
No, sir, there's nothing more I can add.
Mr. Groot, is this even legal?
Is this illegal?
Is this even legal to do?
In what respect, Mr. Mayor?
Divide up two cities like this by a private road through a gate.
I know of no-
Now, Mr. Sadoff is a lawyer, so I'm assuming it's past all muster, but-
I have no, no law that would prohibit what's being proposed.
All right. Be that as it may, we'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion to adopt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries for one.
Can I just tell you one thing? Make sure when you sell these houses, you clearly explain to these residents who's picking up their garbage and who's doing their stuff, because when I get those calls, yeah, when I get those calls, I'm forwarding them over. Good luck.
You guys just don't understand, it's two entirely different systems. Don, I'm surprised you guys are rolling over on that annexation.
This is only your first meeting, right? I had to come and see what's gonna happen. I can tell you, the worst when you mention my name, I got an opportunity to speak and ask the fallacy of the way this thing works. You can't bring somebody else's name and make it up and then start making stuff up and they said they said. It doesn't work like that.
I didn't believe a word of it.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
We'll be seeing each other.
I know we will, you have a great night.
Yeah, y'all too, good job.
Alrighty, number eighteen, third generation sales tax transportation projects. Boy, Brian, we're at ten o'clock, this is like the old days. Do we have to make a motion to extend the meeting or do we eliminate that stuff?
I think that was eliminated.
Chief, I thought you were taking care of that. See, now, the councilwoman's laughing, but she doesn't realize.
She's hungry, no, she's starving, actually.
Yeah, I am starving.
We used to be here until two in the morning. We'd be making motions to extend the meeting till four AM because-
You first try this, send a meeting to eleven, hoping like, okay, the pressure's on, we're gonna do this by eleven, yeah, I mean.
I think you had to start at ten-thirty. I think, if I remember correctly, you had to start at ten-thirty and it was, the first motion was always for thirty minutes.
Okay, so we've got twenty-five minutes.
Yeah, come on up.
All right, Bobby, come on.
I had a whole, like, little presentation over, but in the consideration of time, I'm just gonna give you the, just digest, shoot from the hip version. The county has reintroduced or is talking about doing a third generation sales tax. Basically, it's like the first two, it's transportation projects, except this time it's a little bit broader. We got roads, sidewalks, bicycle and trails and actually maintenance projects as well this time, like resurfacing. They had a work session last Tuesday, I attended, no details though. All they really discussed was the county's needs as far as potential types of projects, county potential funding, and they talked about a prospective schedule, which looks like what they want to do is start discussing interlocals this month and August. I believe November, they talked about bringing it to the BCC for approval and then we have like a referendum in March. What I did, because what we have to do now is start talking about a list or a types of projects we want to do. So, what I did with staff was develop, and I think all of you got a copy of this, basically, list from transportation master plan, staff, created project, not created, but parts we've identified, it could be like an economic benefit and a couple that we already know of from our four twenty-six, four nineteen project. And basically, what I'm looking for from y'all is maybe, basically a consensus or an idea of either less list or add, subtract, give me some ideas that I can go forward with. Problem with, that I have that's frustrating to me is I don't have any parameters yet to set, I don't have a budget yet or a number from the county, so.
See, this is just all flexing, we just have to, my understanding of this is that they just want something from us.
Yes, sir.
Just so they have an idea and it'll be probably just like the last sales tax where then we'll have numbers of what the actual dollar value is, then they'll ask us for a more concrete list, is that the process?
Yes, sir, that's how I understand it and what I envision is-
The same as the second generation.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. What I envision is if we can get consensus on a basic list this evening, something I can go forward with and as, then I get information from the county, I can refine it a bit, get some more specific data on our side as far as estimates go and then maybe meet with you separately or come back before you talk again and get a precise list and go forward to prioritize from there. But, a couple of notes to keep in mind, you know, four twenty-six, four nineteen is our number one priority project, I do recommend that stay number one. I do know the county is going to include that project as well on their list, so hopefully as a, as a dual attack on it, so to speak, we can fully fund it phases two and three. And the, I believe the align, the realignment was part of phase one originally, I think we should keep that as a high priority as well.
Bobby, your list worked really good, I liked your list, it looked great, I had no problem with it.
Hopefully I talked fast enough to get it all out. I think my five minutes.
I'd like to fly over, over-
Make, put that on the list.
There's a guy in Carolina complains about our pawels.
Is there?
Good job, Bobby.
But is there anything you want to add that's on the list?
I think it's, you-
Sidney wants that number five.
No, you know, I was surprised when I saw that because that's on the other side, I didn't realize you could cut Hillcrest.
Well, there's no right of way, we're talking, some of these projects would require right of way, which, so I'm not saying they're real simple to do, but-
Is that why you don't have to look at Clark instead?
Yeah, these, some of these aren't very simple, they're, they're, they're involved.
Yeah, like the, you know, the Doctor's Drive extension, but the, the Hillcrest extension, that was always part of the master plan.
Yes, sir. Some of these make a lot of sense, but some of them also would have political ramifications as well, I mean, you're gonna have people in front of you on some of these if we went forward with them.
Yes, because Hillcrest-
They gotta put it on ballot groups and work it through and make sure there's, I mean, that's a whole-
There's still, there's still a process in front of us, I just needed some kind of consensus to move forward. Give that credit to Mr. Cobb.
Yeah, how much right of way was that, oh, let's not get into that discussion. All right, so everyone's good with the preliminary list the way it is?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
Good job, Bobby.
Real quick though, before I sit down, I just wanted to let y'all know, tomorrow our staff is attending a pre-construction meeting for a four twenty-six and four thirty-four resurfacing by DOT. Not the widening, this is the resurfacing, resurfacing project, they're gonna start at the end of the month. So, just FYI, you'll probably have people calling you and asking you questions thinking it's the widening project, it is not. From four thirty-four, they're gonna run basically from west of four seventeen by Jetta Point, they're gonna come all the way around up to Mitchell Hammock. Well, basically, they're gonna stop short, I'm sorry, Lindsey Lane, because Mr. Kavanaugh is gonna finish the Lindsey Lane section. And on four twenty-six, they're gonna run from Pine all the way to, I think, four thirty-four.
Make sure that the, they were supposed to put some sidewalks or something on north side of four twenty-six.
Correct.
From Lake Jessup to the high school.
Yes, sir, that is still in part of the project.
That's still part of the project?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you.
That's all right, we're tired.
Mayor, so we have consensus to move forward with the list?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, wait, I spoke for everybody, they're all tired.
You said yes.
I saw thumbs.
I went up and down.
I saw thumbs.
We're sure they can-
Future meeting dates? Future meeting dates. And I have, Mr. Cobb, what do you got for us?
Actually, Mayor, I have just one very simple thing and it's just to let you know.
Yes.
I was at the farmer's market this weekend helping our Eagle Scout with the Veterans Tree Beat and this gentleman came up to me and asked me a question about it and I walked him through our presentations and at the end of it, he let me go through all this bill and at the end of it, he said, he said, I'm shipping out next week to Afghanistan. And he said, I hope it's here when I come back.
Are they young men?
Yes, and so, it was very, it, it gave value to what we're doing. That's all I have, Mayor.
Alrighty. Mr. Groot.
Just one thing-
Mr. Groot, we haven't stayed till quarter after ten here in a long time.
I'll try not to help you do that. But I'm circulating a signature, two documents, both, two copies of the same document for the, for the bank loan that are-
We have nothing involved and blah, blah, blah.
That, that, you didn't violate sunshine law and that you have no conflict of interest, so that's what's being circulated, that's all I have.
Great, councilwoman, I think you're on.
I really don't have anything tonight.
God, we love you. Did we ever say we love you?
Howard of Britain? No report?
Yeah.
Me, I have no report?
Councilman Chang? Keep it going, keep it going.
I've got about five things, no, I'm good.
Future meeting dates, Monday, August nineteenth, six-thirty PM regular session, Monday, August